And John is here, yep.
Okay. So let me know when we're ready.
We are ready.
I don't see the record button on.
Is it not? Why do I not see the record button here? There we go. All right, we're good now. Thank you. Good catch.
Okay, thank you. All right, good evening, everyone. This is the Millis Select Board meeting of February 22nd, 2021. Welcome everyone to the meeting. Joining me this evening from the board is Mr. Jermaine and Ms. Underhill. From our office, the Town Administrator Mike Gazinski and Karen Burey are operations manager. We also have some others joining us for pieces of the meeting. Before we begin the meeting tonight, some of you may have had the opportunity earlier this evening to listen to the President talk about the grim milestone that our country has reached today with over $500,000, 500,000 deaths from COVID-19. He spoke movingly about the sorrow of people who've lost loved ones, about the pain they've suffered, and about our willingness and interest and hope to share with them in their dark hours. But he also spoke about the determination of our country to move forward, about perseverance and hope, all of which we all share as we move forward with new vaccines and new opportunities to work our way through this difficult, difficult time for everyone in Millis and everyone around the country and around the world. So I would ask right now, everyone to join me in a moment of silence to remember those who have lost their lives to the COVID pandemic. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. So now we will continue with our business this evening. And of course, the first order of business is an update from Board of Health and health-related issues here. We're trying to keep everybody informed about where we stand in terms of vaccinations and whatnot. So, John, if you would like to share with us the latest developments in terms of COVID vaccine delivery.
Yeah, thank you Chairman McCaffrey. Good evening. This is Johnny McAdie, Board Health Office. Some good news. We have been, Millis has been in the yellow for a couple of weeks, which is a good sign. We've been in the red for, I think, the majority of December, January, which most of the state has been due to the transmission, holiday transmission and winter time climate as well could be added into that as part of the factor. But as we see the holiday transmission dwindling, I think that we've seen the transmission rate go down as well as potentially, I'd say this is too early to tell that the vaccine is actually playing a part in that transmission as well, but it is probably a small part at this point. That being said, just some stats from the state. 1,700,000 doses have been delivered to the state of Massachusetts as of February 21st, and 1,400,000 have been administered, talking first doses, by their numbers. Some interesting news that came to us on the 17th last week, which was unexpected, but we got the news anyways, was the state decided in their wisdom to determine that local levels were not going to receive vaccine and that the concentration would be on mass vaccination clinics such as Gillette and hospitals and regional sites and that nature. We may be seeing potential vaccination deliveries for homebound patients in March, which they said they would give us more information on. But it was kind of startling news because we were all set to start vaccinating at least 100 people per week starting in early March. But that unfortunately has been curtailed, if you will, or it will come to fruition because of the governor's and DPH's mandate or order to push the vaccine to the mass clinics. Now, could this change in the future? It's possible as the vaccine is, the production goes up and other vaccines come in. But for the foreseeable future, we're looking at mass clinics as being the primary source for vaccinations for populations. Another part to that is the governor also opened up the sites to 65-plus. I think that was done, if I'm not mistaken, on the 18th of February. So that there's a sizable population now within the state that is open to getting vaccine. But again, we were kind of taken back by the governor's order or mandate to divert vaccine away from the local level.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that everyone got that information since we had told them what our original plan was the last time we met. And I just want to call out the fact that our Board of Health, our Health Department here in Millis was working very hard to stay ahead of the curve when we were led to believe that we would be able to deliver vaccines locally with the collaboration of emergency management and our Health Department. And the action that we took as a board to designate a vaccination nurse for Millis, we were ready, willing, and able to go. But unfortunately, the, well, I don't want to say unfortunately, but in any event, the signal's changed. So I just want to make sure that everyone in town understands that that's the case and nevertheless call out all the good, hard work of our Health Department, our Board of Health, our emergency management folks that try and do everything we can to stay ahead of this. And if things do change in terms of local delivery, I'm sure that we can regroup and move forward. So again, John, thank you to you and thanks to the Board of Health and others. We really appreciate all the work we did to get prepared. I guess now is go on the website and see if you can get an appointment. I'm not going to suggest that it is a fun experience, but nevertheless, that's where we are. Okay, any other comments with regard to updates that you have, Mr. McDay, or is that pretty much it?
On the vaccine end, yeah, that would be a major notification.
And I'm sorry, I don't want to overlook the fact that we have been seeing less transmission in town. We're now no longer a red zone town, which is great. And I think that also reflects some of the same results in surrounding communities. So at least in this time point in time, we seem to see some reduction in transmission. So hopefully that'll continue as well. Okay, thank you very much. One announcement that I was asked to make is with regard to an upcoming town election. Just wanted to make sure that everyone who may be interested is aware that we do have a town election. We have a number of boards and committees that are up for reelection. We have the, are you going to throw that up, Karen, the list?
Yes. I am attempting to do that now.
While you're doing that, we certainly, the moderator is out for election. The moderator's term is a one-year term, so that actually happens every year. There is a seat available on the select board for a three-year term. Two positions on the school committee, each of which are three-year terms as well. One position on the Board of Health, which is also a three-year term. A position as a library trustee member, also a three-year term, and a planning board member, which is a five-year term. In speaking with the Town Clerk's Office earlier this week, I'm able to say that there are a number of folks who have already indicated interest in running for many of these positions. So I don't want to say that there's not interest, but I wanted to make sure that anyone who may be interested, who may want to think about it, realizes that this is, these are the offices that are open for election this time, a town election. And if you're interested, you should contact the Town Clerk's Office and get what we call nomination papers so that you can have them filled out and returned to the Town Clerk's Office whenever the deadline is, sometime in March, I believe.
Mr. McCaffrey, March 18th is the last day to pull papers.
Last day to pull. So give it some thought, and if you're interested, be in touch with the Town Clerk's Office, and that's the beginning of the process. So thank you. Okay. So the next item on our agenda relates to the town meeting warrant. Town meeting warrant was opened by the board at the last meeting, and we indicated that the town meeting warrant would close as of tonight, which we will take action to close it. Later on in the meeting, we have a list of warrant articles that have been not necessarily submitted, but we have been made aware of the fact that they may be submitted. So at this point, we have 24 of the warrant articles. I would just like to indicate before we close the warrant that we will probably, or potentially we'd be looking at a zoning article relating to retail marijuana delivery services. We may have to take a look at that, and we may have to make a zoning change for that to anticipate that kind of business, which was not really anticipated when we wrote our original, actually two zoning bylaws, one for retail establishments and growers and manufacturers, and one for medical establishments. So this is a new iteration of business, and we may have to look at a warrant article for that. And the planning board did submit, which we will talk about tonight, actually two articles, two zoning articles that are both related, but we may have to list them separately as different warrant articles. We'll have to see what Town Council tells us about that. So with those changes, anything, any other comments or thoughts for my colleagues on the board? Well, then I will take a motion to close the warrant for the May 3rd, 2010 annual town meeting.
2021. For some reason, I wrote 2010. We can go backwards, whatever you want to do.
Wow.
Look back in anger, look back in whatever, I know.
Okay, I move that we close the warrant for the annual town meeting on May 3rd, 2021.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. By the way, the agenda actually lists that it is 5:00.
I just saw that, yes. That'd be my bad. Sorry about that.
I'm glad we caught that. Anyway, it's been moved and seconded that we close the warrant for the annual town meeting of May 3rd, 2021. I'll poll the board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes. Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
That motion is carried unanimously. All right, the next item on our agenda is the appointment of a part-time public safety dispatcher. Mr. Gazinski, if you could introduce the subject, and then I believe the Chief Safire is on to describe to us the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The chief, in an effort to keep their pool of part-time dispatchers active, is asking the board, or has asked me to appoint Mr. Brendan Hofferty to the position of part-time dispatcher. And the chief and I are requesting that the board this evening ratify that appointment. And I know the chief is eager to talk about the candidate before the board this evening.
Thank you. As an effort, like you were saying, to keep our pool of dispatchers, part-time dispatchers sufficient, I'm requesting that Mr. Brendan Hofferty is appointed as a part-time public safety dispatcher. He is a graduate of Franklin High School and has a degree from Merrimack College in criminal justice. He was an intern down in Washington DC. He recently wrapped up his time down there over the last couple of months. He's extremely interested in the position, and he would be a great fit at our department. This is, this will not cost the town any extra. We have additional money within our state 911 training grant that will pay for all of Mr. Hofferty's required training if he's appointed.
Okay, questions from members of the board. Is Mr. Hofferty with you tonight, Chief, or?
No, sir. He's in Hawaii.
He could have stopped to join us.
That's disqualifying as far as I'm concerned.
He clearly knows where to be. Okay, well.
Answer that one, Chair.
I'm speechless. What can I say?
Is he going to share with the group?
Well, you know, by the way, Chief, they do have Zoom in Hawaii, so that's really not a reasonable excuse. Anyway, well, I'd certainly look at his qualifications. He looks like he's really well-suited for the position. And again, this is another action by our, the manager of our, and our chief to make sure that we have the requisite number of staff as well as the flexibility of having part-time help available, so. I think I would then take a motion to accept the Town Administrator's appointment.
I'll move that we accept the Town Administrator's recommendation for appointment of Brendan Hofferty as a, what is, part-time dispatcher at the police department.
Subject to medical exam and drug.
Right, subject to medical exam and drug screen tests.
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded to approve the Town Administrator's appointment of Mr. Hofferty as a part-time dispatcher, subject to medical exam and drug screening. I'll poll the board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes. Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
That motion is carried unanimously. Next item on our agenda is also Chief Safire to speak to us about a recommendation on implementing a K-9 program. Chief, Safire.
Thank you, sir. Yes, I come before the board tonight in regards to implementing a K-9 program within the Millis Police Department. I know it would be a new program with the department. We've never had one. That being said, we do need a K-9 in town. We have to rely on either the state police, Holliston, Franklin, or Medfield. And it would be nice to have our own, and the opportunity has come up to apply for a grant of the Stanton Grant. And what that grant pays for is the dog, the training of the dog, the training of the handler, and retrofitting a cruiser so that a K-9 can be transported in it, as well as set up a kennel for the dog at the assigned officer's home, along with food and veterinary care. This would be a fantastic opportunity for the town, not only for on the job, on the road, for calls for service, but it would be a fantastic community outreach tool as well. There are two options for dogs. You can get a gun dog, explosive dog, or a patrol dog, which is trained for drug work as well as search and rescue. We would probably go for the patrol drug and search and rescue dog. That's more applicable for our community. Realistically, we're looking at probably a year and a half, maybe two years before the dog gets here because it all depends on availability of the dog, which could be almost a year out. It just depends on timing for that. But one of the stipulations for the grant is the support of the town and a letter from the Select Board in support of it. Again, this wouldn't come at a cost to the town, and it would be a great opportunity for our community.
Mr. Chairman? Yeah, I have one question.
Yes, please.
I like the idea, but I've got to ask a few things. First of all, do we really need that kind of an animal to assist us in this town? I mean, we've all seen them on TV and other places, but how often would we really use this animal?
On average, I bet you we'd use them at least once a month. I bet you we'd use it more than I can even think right now because having it available on car stops, readily available, would probably present more of an opportunity to use it. But again, it's having a dog in the event somebody goes missing. You know, there's calls go out all the time for dogs available for, whether it be a child, an elderly individual that might have Alzheimer's that walked away. And, you know, a lot of the time, lives of the essence. So again, it's just another tool that we have available to us.
I understand, would it not be better to be sharing it with another town for the number of times we're likely to need the animal?
Well, I think to share it, again, you're waiting on that town, even if they're available, to get to you. When we called the state police, I mean, you're talking half hour, 40 minutes till they arrive, depending on where they are, and, you know, you're talking who knows how long to be able to get a dog. They just don't show up. So again, I mean, I think for exigency, I think it would be great to have one in our town. That's where the need is, really.
What about with respect to costs? Wouldn't we have to provide a pen or some facility for the animal?
That's all covered by the grant.
For how long does the grant cover it?
So the grant establishes specifically the kennel at the officer's home. They go to the house, they build it. That gets paid out of the grant. Retrofitting one of the cruisers, that, the grant pays for that as well, along with training of the dog, training of the police officer, and backfilling of the ships. The grant total is $27,000. And what, we also, there's a program called Vest the Dog. The bulletproof vest for the K-9 is approximately $5,000, and we will be able to get the vest for the animal through the grant as well. So moving forward, after the program is set up and established, most communities have a, like a donation program to offset any vet or food costs.
What about location? You say it'll be housed, the kennel will be built at the home of the officer. Can we assume that the officer would be living here in Millis or very close there, too?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely. And like I said, the dog has to stay with the handler. It's not like we can put the kennel at the police department and you know, care for the animal that way. The dog stays with the handler.
I have a dog here. You're welcome to, but otherwise, I don't have any more questions. Thank you very much.
Chairman McCaffrey?
Ms. Underhill?
If I may, I do have a question. This may be sort of similar to what Pete asked, but a little different. So it says that departments need to commit to retaining a K-9 unit for five years to be eligible for that particular grant that we're discussing. The grant sounds like it covers pretty much what we would need it to cover. My question in terms of expense for what the town would need to expect to spend past that. So is there, you know, I know you did mention that there is a, you know, typically in communities, there's some kind of a donation, which I'm sure would get a lot of attention, would be great, but outside of that, you know, in terms of periodic training or whatever else has to happen, what are we looking at for past the grant money?
So basically food and vet visits.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Jermaine?
May I ask one more question?
Please.
Other communities such as ours of similar size and so forth, what do they do with respect to dogs of this nature? Are they also going for them, or are they finding that they're costly? What's their view and what have you found from them?
All the communities that I've spoken to that are borderists, that, Medfield just got theirs last year from this grant. Holliston's has been established for the last eight or nine years. Franklin, Medway used to have one and it passed away. They use them all the time because as a metrolet community, we're part of a regional response area that covers 44 cities and towns. Those K-9s go out quite often, but again, just as important as they are to go to calls, it's a huge community outreach program. We work maps here for various programs that we do, demonstrations and stuff. And to be able to have one of our own officers available with one of our own dogs, have our own established program in town would be great. As you know, I mean, we're, our department's somewhat limited in terms of specialties and different areas of policing that you can get into due to our size. So establishing this program at a minimal amount of money after the grant, which would be the vet and the food, it also provides incentive to other individuals to retain them here at the police department and other opportunities for the employees as well.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Chief, let me just recap because from my perspective, I think this is a very prudent and cost-effective initiative. I mean, essentially, we're talking about five-year commitment, which the town would have to pay for small amounts of food and potentially veterinarian care in years four and five. In the interim, we would be covered by the grant. This to me is a very low-cost way of frankly evaluating the value of the K-9 program for our community. So I would be, you know, most supportive of moving forward with this.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I would like to speak in favor of Chief Safire's recommendation. I think the amount of time that would far outweigh the amount of personnel it takes to do the actions of a dog. During a search, a dog can search an area 10 times as much as one single or a firefighter. We've seen it. We've worked with them. A lot of times, a search is delayed while we're waiting for the dog to arrive. We've seen them pick up a scent and get right on the trail, locate a person that would take 20 or 30 men and women to search that area. And again, as Chief Safire said, with the way a lot of their interactions are, a K-9 has a different impact on people. Sometimes it's common, it makes the person think twice about taking off on the police officer. And again, I would just speak in support. We've worked with dogs a lot, and I think it'd be a great addition to the police department.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate that input. Is there any further questions or comments from the board members?
No further questions.
Well, then I guess we've reached the point where we're being asked to.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, are you accepting comments from listeners? Kathy McKinnis?
As always.
Okay. I didn't mean to interrupt. I was waiting for you to ask for.
Just bear with me for a second, not only you but others. Once again, I have to say that I am clearly technologically inept. Um, once again, I have to, um, say that I am clearly technologically inept because I couldn't see that you had raised your hand or, so I apologize. Please, go ahead.
Oh, thank you, Jim. I was just, um, you know, it's a great idea. No one would say no to something like this, but I'm wondering, um, just four weeks ago, um, my dog had, um, ACL surgery, just jumping, and both of them broke at the same time, and it was four thousand dollars. And I, I'm just wondering with the amount of running around and everything that any type of dog does, this money would be, um, how, how it would be paid for and with the regular vet bills and everything, I'm wondering if the chief would be, uh, you know, just if the, if the chairman would consider asking the chief if, um, expenses caring for this, um, dog would come out of his budget somehow? And, um, if not, then I'm wondering, um, don't we have a, some sort of gentleman's agreement or gentlelady's agreement with surrounding towns to, um, if, if something terrible happens to ask them to bring over their, um, their dog for help until, uh, you know, because it was, it would be like what, um, the vice chair stated, almost sharing with another town and perhaps pay a fee for each time they come over. It's, it's just something to throw out there because, um, it's like any kind of grant, after a while, the town owns it. And, um, you know, looking forward to, to issues, I'm just, that's all I'd like to add, Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I guess that there is, the, the question really is around who bears the cost of, uh, I'll say veterinary care, because the issue of whether or not the regional solution, uh, is there for us certainly is something that we'd have to make a judgment on.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Jermaine?
I don't know if it's applicable to a police dog, but I know that insurance is available for medical purposes. I suspect that they would say certain things in the line of duty would not be covered, but a standard injury like, um, Ms. McInnes was mentioning, others, might be possible to get covered under that kind of canine insurance. So it's something I'd suggest we explore at any rate if we decide to move forward on this.
Okay. Uh, Chief Safire, I mean, could you speak to us a little bit about what is typically done by departments who have, uh, a canine program in terms of coverage for veterinary care?
Sure. Um, I'll talk about the, um, the injury question that came up, um, in terms of the ACL that came up as, as an example. So most recently, the town of Foxborough's dog, um, needed a substantial amount of surgery in the thousands of dollars. That didn't come out of their police department. Um, again, towns that have canines have established funds where people contribute to them. I know that Foxborough was able to cover all the costs through the fund. Um, there is health insurance available and you can use them on police dogs through Trupanion, um, at a minimal cost as long as you get it when the dog's, uh, a puppy as opposed to when the dog's older. Um, so no is the answer. I would, I wouldn't, I wouldn't ask the town for money in the event something, um, horrific or out of the scope of a budget occurred with, with the animal. I would handle it. Um, in terms of the regional, um, calling a dog regionally, again, time is of the essence. If you have a small child missing and you need to get a dog out there, would you rather have one that's, I don't know, less than ten minutes out or are you, are you okay with waiting thirty or forty minutes? Um, or if your house was broken into, like, when we call, when departments call for a dog, you need the dog. Um, there are some incidents that you can wait and call in regional assets. For example, if there's a individual barricaded in their house, as long as they're in their house, they're not going anywhere. So you contain the perimeter, perimeter, call in your regional assets, which we have done, and, um, they handle the problem. But again, this is a different type of application where really time is of the essence and the ability to get a dog out there, um, is, is needed, especially, um, for missing kids, right? Uh, be any in progress, they take, uh, individual takes off on foot, that is all time sensitive stuff. So again, that would offer a better service to the community. Even if you use the dog once and have found a missing kid in a year, I'm, I'm good with that. Like, that's a win all day long.
You're muted.
Oh, it's Wayne Clocko?
No, I don't think you're muted. Jim is wa-, is unmuted, sorry.
Um, now I'm flying not only blind but dumb. I can't even speak at any event. Yes, Mr. Clocko, I believe.
Uh, just, just one question. Um, uh, does the five-year commitment require the town to replace the dog if it's not, uh, capable of serving for that entire period of time? Does that include, um, all the training and upfront cost that's being considered within the grant here?
Chief, do you have a, uh, thought on that?
So will, whether or not the dog, first the dog has the degrees, and, um, if the dog doesn't pass the training, the dogs are out. Um, after the dog and the handler goes through initial, uh, the initial training, the, the dog and the handler go to a formal monthly maintenance for our monthly maintenance training session. Um, that we'll know, you know, right after the initial training, which is two months, whether or not the dog passed or failed. And if the dog fails, the dog's out and that's it. We're, we're not tied to anything. Did that answer your question?
Um, I think that addresses the question. Question here really is, um, you know, is the town looking to make a commitment which is, uh, basically the financial commitment called for in the grant? Um, and if that is insufficient, then, you know, I don't suppose there's any commitment by the community to continue the canine program. We just have to commit to a five-year commitment in order to receive the grant. Um, so the question is whether or not at this point in time, I think there's two questions for us. One, one is, you know, the advisability of a canine program for our community in and of itself. And the second is, are we willing to commit to it for a five-year period in order to have a substantial portion of that commitment funded by this Stanton Foundation, uh, grant? So it's up to the board at this point, uh...
Mr. Chairman, one last question for the board?
Yes, yes.
First off, I want to congratulate, um, I wonder if that's me, Chris, uh, Chief Chris, because he's constantly every day looking for grants and how to make Millis a better town. And, um, I, I really appreciate that, Chris. I know how you've worked, but, um, I, I don't know, is it a requirement that all Millis policemen live in Millis? So will this dog be in Millis? And if that police officer goes off to, uh, greener pastures, uh, is our puppy, little dog, going to stay in Millis? Thanks.
Sure. All, the, the, all the, most of the officers live in Min-, Millis and those that don't live in really in close proximity, um, whether they live in Medway or Franklin. Um, but yeah, the, again, if, if we do get the canine program and the dog gets assigned to the officer, that, that, that is a tool to retain them. So in my opinion, I don't think the officer would leave once they got the dog, um, because that is a pretty, um, great position to be in, to be a, a canine officer. So it, it really acts as a tool and a benefit to the department as well as the community to again, retain our personnel, which is, is what we've been working towards, uh, because there was a time there that, that we were a training mill more than, um, more than anything. And we've, we've definitely gotten away from that by implementing various programs, um, within the community.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chair, one last question, I hope. Um, are, are you committing to the dog, uh, being in Millis twenty-four seven?
Uh, what?
Through the chair, please, I'm sorry.
Well, yeah, the question is if, you know, basically if it's assigned to a, an officer, if the officer's living in Millis, I assume that that means the dog stays in town. The officer might go on vacation or whatnot. Um, but, I mean, can we count on at least the predominant president, presence of the dog in the town?
Yes, it, absolutely. The, the, the dog would be on, on duty here and like I said, uh, we have, we have law officers just out of town, um, Medway and Franklin. We're talking a half a year, a year. So if it does pass, you know, we can make arrangements to, um, see that that happens if it goes to an officer out of town.
So one, again, uh, one question leads to another, uh, Mr. Chairman. So if someone lives in Franklin and it's at nighttime, what would be the difference between calling the dog in from Franklin and asking for assistance from, um, Holliston? I'm just, I'm just, I'm just hoping that, you know, the, the, the officer that receives the dog, I think all of us would like to see that, that dog live in Millis, stay, work in Millis, and then live off duty in Millis. And it sounds like you're, you're really not able to say that now, Chief, which I totally get. I just want to put the bug in your ear.
But, right, but it's contractual too. So it, within the officer's contract, they have to, they, they can live outside of the mill, the town of Millis. Um, I believe it's a twelve-mile limit, is a twelve, twelve mile as a crow flies. So now we're getting into contractual stuff.
But you wouldn't commit, I'm sorry, through the chair again, I'm no, I don't mean to have a personal conversation with the, uh, Chief.
Hold on, hold on just, hold on just a second.
Please.
I think we've tried to answer all the questions. I'm sure there are a lot of questions we could ask. Let's answer the last one, um, and then I think it's time for the board to move on to make a decision. So the question really is about commitment on the part of the chief to maintain the dog in Millis twenty-four seven.
Thank you very much, Chairman. It took me ten minutes to say that.
So, well, I could address that if, once we get that further down the road, but, um, again, as you, as you know, there is a, there is language within the contract that, that they're allowed to live out of town.
We will, we'll abide by the contractual provisions and you, I'm sure, I know from my perspective, um, we have a great deal of confidence in the, the chief's ability to manage the, the police force. I think it's clear that the town would like to make sure everything you can do reasonably to have the dog live in town twenty-four seven. Uh, I think that's assuming we go ahead and adopt this provision, which is really what I'd like to move on to at this point. We have a number of other appointments here that are getting delayed. Um, now, that doesn't mean the board has to take an action. If the board decides it wants to defer this for further conversation, that's certainly up to the board. Um, but, so at this point, I would ask the other members of the board, are you willing to move forward with a motion here or would you like to have further discussion and further thought and defer this decision to an, our next meeting?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Jermaine?
I'm satisfied with what I've heard. Uh, certainly, I could ask many more questions and I suspect there are other issues unresolved, but on the whole, I think the basics of the issue I feel comfortable with, so I prefer to move forward. My recommendation on my side would be to move forward.
Ms. Underhill?
I agree.
Then I'll make, no, a motion.
No motion. Go ahead.
I'll make a motion, okay? That, uh, the select board endorses the idea of Stanton Foundation's canine units establishment grant to provide the town with a canine unit, to set it up, to fund it for at least the first, what was it, two or three years and to get things going and that it would be a, a valuable asset to the town, to the town's police department.
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded for the select board to approve the implementation of a canine program for our community subject to the Stanton Foundation Canine Unit Establishment Grant, which also requires the town to commit to retaining the canine unit for a five-year period. So I will poll the board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
A motion is carried unanimously. Thank you to everyone who participated in the discussion. It's important to have these discussions so that everybody gets a chance to have their, uh, um, input and we can all benefit from having the dialogue and the, and the discussion. So, thank you, Chief Safire, Chief Barrett, and others who've, who've commented.
Thank you very much.
The next thing we have on our agenda is, um, a visit from the, um, some, maybe some or all members of the Millis Permanent Building Committee. They, I've asked them to come forward and discuss with the board the latest reporting that is going on with respect to the disposition of the Lansing Millis Building. So, Mr. Clocko, I believe you're there.
I am here, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. I believe I have, um, uh, Permanent Building Committee members, Rich Nichols, um, and Diane Jermaine. I see Bob Weis, uh, who's an ex-officio member, um, is on the screen, and Craig Schultz. Uh, so we have, uh, almost all of the members here. Um, I will, uh, start the conversation by, um, letting you know that, um, I believe it was in the spring of two thousand and nineteen, the town approved a twenty-five-thousand-dollar, um, amount to conduct a feasibility study for the evaluation and potential reuse of the Lansing Millis Building, also known as the train station. Um, uh, Mark Proffer, an architect in town, um, uh, created a request for proposals, which was an excellent document that served, uh, defined the scope of the, uh, of the study and served our purposes, uh, extremely well. Uh, the, the permanent building committee's, uh, role, uh, in that process was to manage the, uh, work of the, uh, architectural firm that was doing the evaluation. That firm is, uh, Spencer Sullivan boat of Boston. They specialize in historical restorations. Their report has been published, um, I believe it's within, certainly within the last, I think, thirty days and has been, uh, posted on the town's, um, um, uh, cover page of, of the website. It's, uh, there for everybody to read. Uh, I think, uh, if you take the time to look at it, you'll find it's, uh, it's very detailed. It's one hundred and fourteen pages and, um, is extremely comprehensive. As part of that report, um, we asked the, um, the architect to determine potential reuses for the building. Um, they met with the permanent building committee in discussing, in discussing what options might be appropriate for the town of Millis. Uh, they included a, a food shop and on the first floor and an office, uh, a retail space, um, um, a single-family residence, um, a live and work studio and a classroom, um, which was the last known use for the building when it was a Montessori school before, uh, before, uh, that, uh, relationship ended. I'm here before you tonight to talk about next steps, um, and, uh, those include two, uh, separate paths in my, um, opinion. The first is to de-, to determine what the best options are for the town, um, whether or not that's a public-private partnership to develop the property, uh, whether... not that's a public-private partnership to develop the property, um, whether the town wants to be a landlord and have the traditional role of being a landlord and having a tenant in the building, uh, whether the town wants to have an outright sale of the property and have some, um, uh, his, uh, control over, um, historical preservation and restoration. Uh, all of those things, um, uh, need to be considered, uh, by the town. I can tell you that since, uh, the report has been, uh, published, there has been some interest in the town, um, in, um, in determining, uh, potential future use, which I think is terrific. And I think we should aggressively, um, pursue, uh, those options and see what best fits for the town. Um, I will also advise those that, um, may not be as familiar with the site, um, we, the Permanent Building Committee looked at, um, uh, the report, uh, with the architect, who again, I think did an excellent job. Um, but the site is restricted. There is a railroad, um, uh, easement on one side, there's wetlands on the other side, there's not good parking, um, uh, uh, those are the bad, uh, or detrimental aspects to it. On the other side, it's adjacent to a, um, a, um, a very good retail area. So, um, I think we're looking for some advice from the select board as to who, um, should be pursuing these options and, and what, if any, things the town is willing to or not willing to consider. The second part is, um, uh, in terms of next steps, is to, um, define, um, what the scope of work would be to stabilize the building. Um, uh, there is currently water intrusion, um, there's, um, uh, raccoons and squirrels that are living in the building, uh, doing damage. I think Karen can advise me, I think five raccoons have been evicted.
So far, yep, so far, we have evicted five. Um, there are also, like you said, some squirrels in there. We're hoping to finally, um, block off some sections where they've been coming in and hopefully put an end to it, but they were, they were living well over there.
Hmm. So I think, um, I think for everybody's, um, uh, benefit, um, I can't think of a, and again, this is my personal opinion, and I would ask any and every, anyone else to, to, uh, voice their own opinion. I can't think of a, another building in town that is, um, represents the history of Millis more than, than the Lansing Millis Building. And I think there, because, for the same reason that the town voted $25,000 to evaluate its condition and potential uses, I think there is a, certainly a need or an interest in town in preserving the building for, for many years to come. And so, um, we've broken down the costs, and these are preliminary order of magnitude costs for immediately stabilizing the building, and, um, that work we have estimated, um, uh, at just under a half a million dollars. And other exterior work, um, about a million dollars to do that. The report, as you can read, um, identifies those amounts, uh, pretty clearly. And then depending on how the building might ultimately be used, um, there's a range of, uh, between 730,000 and 830,000 dollars for what I would call as tenant fit out, depending on the, how the building might ultimately be used, and that's for mechanical and electrical, uh, requirements code, upgrades, uh, handicapped accessibility, asbestos and lead abatement, um, and all of the normal kinds of things that you would get into in terms of, uh, a rehab or, or restoration. And so, um, that's where we're at. The report, I think, has served us well, and now it's a question of, um, what would the select board, um, like to do?
I would ask first that there are members of the select board who would like to address things to Mr. Clacco, and then I would like to, there's a number of people on here who may be interested in speaking to the issue. So, uh, any, either member of the select board, would you like some questions, some comments?
Right, Mr. Chair, I'd like to reserve my questions for a little later. I've got a number of them, but I'd like to hear what others have to say in the community and elsewhere.
I would like to take the same approach.
So we've got two people who are going to take the fifth. And so, okay, let's, um, I would just observe that, let's say, this is a question without necessarily a simple answer. I would like to just clarify, uh, Mr. Clacco or whomever, on the urgency of the stabilization component here. I mean, this building has been sitting there, you know, unused for one or two years here, but, you know, what are we looking at in terms of irreparable harm, if, if that can be estimated?
I don't think the building is in imminent danger of, um, uh, being, um, irreparably damaged, if that's your question. But, um, um, I will tell you that the building has sat there, I think it's, I think it's, uh, five or six years since the building has actually been, been occupied. So it's without heat. Uh, we have, um, uh, destructive animals, uh, living in it, and it leaks, and we've got access points, um, uh, you know, for, for vermin and other critters to get in the building. And it's not, it's, because it's not occupied, it's, uh, potentially a risk, uh, for vandalism or, or, um, or other kind of damage. So, uh, I can't tell you that you need to do something because of some imminent concern, but, um, I would say, just like your home, if any of those conditions existed in your home, I think, um, all of us would want to deal with them sooner rather than later.
Thank you. Uh, and this goes, again, back to the comment you made earlier, is that the value of maintaining this building, however ends up occupying it to the community, is high. I mean, this is clearly a very, uh, central historic building in the center of the town of Millis, which has, you know, much history attached to it. So I don't think they're going to get any argument that this isn't worth trying to find a way to preserve and utilize. Um, I, I don't want to see it become something that stands there unused, that that's, to me, it's find a use and fix it up for the use. That's kind of, I know it's overly simplistic, uh, but some of this has really got to be, what direction do we want to take with this building, I think, uh, beyond just the preparation?
And, and to that point, um, we discussed the issue with, with the town as to whether or not it had any, um, space needs for it to use, uh, uh, the building, and there is none. Um, and I think, uh, speaking for the committee, our conclusion was that, um, the town's interest is most preserved in being able to, to be able to have it in town, but not necessarily be able to get in and use it. There is no, there is no immediate use need that we've identified for the town to have it, um, for ourselves.
Uh, okay. Are the others who would like to ask questions or speak to the issue?
Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'd like to say something.
Mr. Weiss?
Thank you. Um, yeah, Robert Weiss, I'm the, uh, well, actually going to make a mention as the town's Economic Development Director, the Planning Director, and as the Energy Manager, uh, for the town. At, at first, I'd like to thank, uh, the Permanent Building Committee, especially for its perseverance during this pandemic, uh, to finish the study. It made it, the whole COVID-19 situation made it that much more difficult. And so, Wayne, I know you kept after the, uh, the architect, and it was not easy for anyone, so, uh, I think it was very well done. Thank you guys very much for, we did, ended up getting a great, um, report. As the Economic Development Director, um, this can be a great link to leveraging more investments, um, in the town, um, and more businesses to the town. So, uh, you know, Mr. Clacco has, has, um, mentioned some of the costs. I, I would say, at this point, this is not something we should be worrying about long-term costs at all right now. We should be thinking about, uh, there are ways to deal with these things. A, as a planning director, um, this building can really be the cornerstone to developing a diverse and dynamic, uh, town center, which is something we're going to be looking at during the, uh, the summer, I believe. Um, and finally, as the Energy Manager, um, as this town pursues, you know, as we go after this, this renovation and, and work on this building, we need to consider this is a, an investment, uh, in Millis's, uh, 21st century, and an opportunity to align the town's, um, uh, goals with the state's goals for adapting our buildings, uh, to climate resilience, which is something we're going to talk about a little bit later on too. So, uh, last week, I was at a, at a webinar for the Accelerated Climate Resilience Program. Um, so we can find, uh, specific help in terms of plans and designs and installments so we can bring the, this building, uh, to net zero energy or other techniques for buildings as, uh, climate change, uh, comes down the road. So I, this is a wonderful opportunity of, and a great investment, uh, for the town to make. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Um, I can't see who it is, so.
It's Richard Nichols.
Mr. Nichols, thank you.
Um, yeah, uh, Richard Nichols, I'm the Chairman of the Planning Board, um, so I'm also a member of the Permanent Building Committee. Um, I would like to echo, uh, Wayne's comments that there's probably no, um, building in Millis that is more, uh, historic than the, the Lansing Millis, um, uh, uh, train station. Um, so I, I think that in the town's interest, we should look to it as an investment in preserving, uh, some of our history. Um, the thought of maintaining it is number one, and then we could figure out what we need to do down the road for developing the, um, the, the property.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Schultz?
Thank you. Um, yeah, what Wayne said and what Rich said, it's exactly, it's, it's part of our history, it needs to be maintained. Finding a use that is the most economic, that makes sense for us, um, is an important part. I, I think the value to the town lies in the architectural significance of the exterior, not necessarily the interior. So trying to partner with somebody and work with somebody to develop it appropriately, I think is probably the most cost-effective. But towards that end, while it's not an imminent threat of, uh, falling down or, or, or further decay, I think it's something we do have to take seriously and look at, stabilizing the building so we can find a partnership to work at. And that's where I come down on it throughout the whole committee. Find a way to stabilize it, find a partner that wants to work with us, and preserve the historic exterior with deed restrictions and such, and let somebody find the best use they can for that facility for the economic development of the town.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
It's Diane Germaine.
Diane Germaine, yes.
I would like to make a comment about the exterior of the building. One of the things that makes it so charming is the way it looks when it's, when the grass is cut, when the weeds are down, and all that other stuff is done. And I think when we're looking at stabilizing the building, maybe we can get a group together in town that'll come in like they do for Millis Beautification and work on cleaning up the outside. I think it would go a long way to making the building look nicer. Done.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Germaine?
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Mr. Dennis.
I just, um, I just want to ask, I want to ask a question. Is, um, do you think this is a matter that, you know, three selectmen, three represent, great representatives of the town? Or is this a question that would be allowed to be for, um, sent to a town meeting for discussion by all townspeople to weigh the options, whether to spend? Um, I tried to roughly write down, um, Chairman Clacco's figures, and it comes to, um, 1.5 million, I believe, to do what needs to be done. And, um, if, if the town wants to approve something like that, or B, if the town would, um, sell it, but yet the exterior has to be, uh, kept as if, except for stabilization. So, uh, there appears to be no group in, uh, the town hall that has use for it, but the people could still drive by and see the charm, the charmedness of, uh, what people are saying it is, or C, um, tear it down, you know, that, I, I, I personally would, uh, wouldn't want to shoulder the responsibility, but that's what elected officials do. I, I, I would hope that this would be a matter that a lot of people, other than a Zoom meeting, could weigh in on this, Mr. Chairman, and I thank you for the time once again, as always.
Mr. Chair? It's Karen. I, I just wanted to add that I've, I'm sharing my screen at this point, so people at home are looking. If you go to the town website on the homepage, you can find this feasibility study there. It is very interesting. It is a very long, um, report, but just so people know that it's there if they want to take a look. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Drake, is there something you wanted to, uh, observe?
If I may, please. I want to hear what others have to say, and I'm quite interested in the building itself. And it kind of confirms a lot of thoughts I have along that way. Basically, from my perspective, and I speak for myself only, I think the building is one that to some degree we need to wor, be concerned with historically in terms of how it's preserved. Um, I understand that we could sell it with restrictions and do a variety of things. My suspicion is that we can also make use of it within the town. I realize there's a cost. There's nothing we're going to do beyond tonight, regardless of how we were to vote on it, that wouldn't involve the town in further discussion, and certainly if funds are going to be committed to it, we know that that's going to be taken in front of the town also. But I've got some thoughts on this, and I'd just like to run through them, and I'm sorry that they're not very well ordered, but I'm going to go through my thought process anyway. First of all, what I see is a need to preserve our history, but that's going to require, if we are going to do it at all, some stabilization of the building. That has to be taken into account. Secondly, um, there is a potential for public support and participation, but again, that's going to only come after dialogue and discussion and other actions with the community itself, as it should. I happen to think from a historical perspective that the building might be of interest to a variety of groups within the town for some opportunities to display our historical society, in part. They could have exhibits there, to have a Chamber of Commerce, if you will, where they could offer information about the town within the building, um, to basically have an area that might be an adjunct, if you will, to the library or, like, council on aging or anything. They have a reading room, it could have a variety of things for others to come to. It's an ideal location for somebody to come in, read, wander down the street, get something to eat or drink, come back, read a little, have discussions about history, whatever. to eat or drink, come back, read a little, have discussions about history, whatever. I realize that cleanup is going to be necessary. I also understand from what Mr. Clacco mentioned that there's a limited amount of space around the building for other things, but maybe there's an area for kids ultimately to play. I do not know, and I don't want to presuppose my knowledge when I don't have it. All I'm suggesting is that it be considered as an opportunity for the town to make use of a building in ways that we might not previously have considered them. I realize there's a cost to it, and that has to be taken into account. But to me, I think there's a historical value there that could be made useful to the town over a period of time, once the building is stabilized, that would make this a valuable asset to the town. Thank you.
Ms. Underhill.
Thank you. I agree. I think the building, I think it's great. I love the building. I drive by it, and I can certainly see all sorts of great things coming of it. I'd love to see the inside. I think it would be a very important thing for the town to preserve in terms of town history, and there are certainly a lot of different options. I really do like some of the ideas that Mr. Germain put forth. However, and as he also noted, I mean, the funding of that would be, you know, where the challenge would lie. But in the report, there were definitely a few different configurations and potential options proposed for what could be done there. I would also love to see a restaurant in there. I do think it would have a lot of value. I think, obviously, the biggest question is where the money would come from, and, you know, depending on priorities or restrictions at this time with that, do we have the luxury of time? Like was discussed earlier, we certainly don't want any further damage to the building, and we do know that there is, there are raccoons and all sorts of stuff and water and so forth. So honestly, you would want to mitigate that as quickly as possible, but what kind of flexibility do we have? Do we have to do a full half million to stabilize it? Do we, can we stabilize it for a half million and wait for some of the million-dollar outside work? What kind of flexibility do we have in order to prioritize this with everything else?
Mr. McCaffrey, can I speak to that?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Clacco.
My recommendation would be that we develop a scope of work for stabilizing the building, which involves putting on a new roof, repairing some of the obvious damage to the soffits and fascia, and closing up all of the holes that are allowing all of the undesirables into the building. And I'd like to, and I would recommend that we do that in a way that when it comes time to do permanent repairs, we don't wind up doing something, spending money, and then having to tear that apart and redo it again. So I think some thought needs to be put into just what really needs to be in that early stabilizing scope of work. And I would ask that if you want the permanent building committee to do further work on this project, that we go back to the architect to define that scope. Now, they may have an additional cost in order to do that, and if they do, we'd come back to you for consideration of that. But I think that that would be, again, considering the long-term use of funds, that would be my recommendation to get the best value out of that expense. I will also tell you that if you look at the report in detail, that $490,000 has several contingencies in it, for design contingency, construction contingency. I can tell you that from all of the, all of the construction work that's going on today, certainly it is negatively affected by the coronavirus. There is lots of construction work out on the street. And so we're hedging our bet, if you will, for unknowns because we're trying to predict the future. That's difficult. So there's no guarantee that the $490,000 is the right number. I think we've tried to look at it conservatively, and hopefully that would be on the high side. But my recommendation would be to develop a scope with the architect. So we've got something for you to, something hard to actually consider. As to the other aspects of potential use, whether or not it's for civic or private use, I ask you, what is it that you would like, if anything, for the permanent building committee to do in that regard?
Can I make a comment, Mr. McCaffrey?
Yes, please.
First of all, I want to say that I agree with what Wayne just said. If you're going to.
If you wouldn't mind identifying yourself, that'd be helpful.
Ellen Rosenfeld.
Thank you.
I think that if you're going to seriously consider doing something with this building, you need to preserve whatever's left in the inside by taking care of the outside. That's not rocket science, to get that out. So that's number one. I also, Jane, you said, maybe I'm too loud here.
No, it's the chair.
Yeah. That whatever you do on the outside, it's not going to inhibit what you're eventually going to do on the inside. It just doesn't work that way. It'll be fine. My next comment is, if you think you're going to rent it or sell it, you're not going to get a big chunk of money on either one of those avenues. It's not worth very much. It's not worth much as this historic building. Nobody's going to pay for that, and it's not worth anything for a tenant. What are you going to get, $12 a foot, maybe, if you're lucky? And then if you think you have a good tenant and you're going to build it out for that tenant, which landlords typically do, and they sign a little bit of a lease, well, then the tenant will have another pandemic, and then the tenant's going to stop paying, and you've built it out, and you've got nothing. So if you're seriously considering keeping this building and keeping it, and then you're going to sell it, you're going to put a deed restriction on it, well, who's going to monitor that? You're going to go in and knock on the door and make sure that they didn't do anything? None of that is going to work. The only thing that's going to work, I think, is keeping it for something for the town, whatever it is, even if you just drive by and look at it. It doesn't mean you have to have a big thing inside and all kinds of stuff. It just can be a memorial to the town. So I think you need to think of that and just preserving it for what it is. But to think you're going to put a restaurant in there, or somebody going to live in there, if they're going to live in there, then what do you care what, you know, what they do with it? It just doesn't make sense. It has to be something that you'll either open up and give tours, that this was the train station, or you just put a lock on it and you preserve it, and people can drive by and it'll be there forever. And also, Wayne mentioned that there's really no parking. So you really, parking is the only thing you need for a commercial use, and there isn't any good parking. So those are my two cents for whatever they're worth. And then my next question is, if the town does this work, I know you keep mentioning partnering, partnering. If the town does its work on their own, that's prevailing wage. Am I correct, Wayne?
That is correct.
So if you partner with somebody, is there a way to get a, I hate to say this publicly, but is there a way to get around that in some way?
On order. We understand that there may be ways to skin a cat. How about that?
Okay. Because that's, I mean, this building, how many square feet is that building, Wayne?
I think it's about 2,500 square feet on the first and second floors.
Each floor?
No, all together. I think it's 1,300 on.
One and the other?
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah. Not a lot of space there for what you're planning to put into it.
I was thinking that if we had a nice developer in town or an architect, this would be a perfect studio for them to really demonstrate their creative capabilities, and it would be a great location for anybody that wanted to really highlight Milis in relation to their business.
Yeah. Too bad we don't have any of those.
Maybe we should put another branch up of, Mr. Chairman, if I might, Kathy McGinnis?
Yeah.
Yeah. Don't be so excited, Mr. Chairman, really.
No, we're going to, yeah, this is not, this is like a conversation here. We've got.
Yeah, okay. So I've asked the speaker, and you're allowed it. I want to just comment on what Vice Chairman Germain had to say about uses of the building. I didn't write them down, but he mentioned, and Mr. Germain, correct me if I'm wrong, keeping artifacts there, a reading room, having meetings and the like. And as you were stating that, I was saying, hmm, the library has areas for meetings for all the townspeople, Veterans Memorial Building, the senior center has it. And regarding the artifacts, I don't know if the public is aware, but the first floor of the historical Oak Grove Farmhouse is filled with artifacts and memorabilia historical from the town of Milis that the Historical Commission and others have painstakingly cataloged and maintained, and they have a tenant living above it, so we know they're safe. I just wonder, who would staff the building when there are meetings and reading rooms there? Of course, the town doesn't ever want anybody without having an employee there to more or less make sure everything is still there at the end of the day. And I'd be also, for Mr. Germain, we mentioned that other town departments would be interested. And I know by working with Chairman Clacco, the extensive work that he does, and in his opening remarks, he stated that, in fact, no town department was interested in it due to an elevator would be needed, or not parking, or not near the Veterans Memorial Building, which it seems to be. So I'm leery of putting credence in something like that, when you've had the permanent building committee chair state otherwise. And once again, I just want to, it would be great, like what Aaron Underhill said about, and others, about putting money in to stabilize it, and especially Ellen Rosenfeld, fix it up on the outside and, you know, leave the inside for a future date, you know, maybe for town meeting to decide what they want. But it would be shorter money, like Mr. Clacco said, just to make sure, you know, the building doesn't fall down, Mr. Chairman, is all I'm saying. And thank you for my time and your time.
Thank you. So at this point, I would just like to say a few things. First of all, in 1999, when the town hall moved from the Lansing-Milis train station to the Veterans Memorial Building, the town knew that we had to do something with this building. And what we ended up doing was having a tenant in there for a while. That way, the building was at least going to be occupied. But clearly, that strategy, which is now, you know, 20-plus years old, has brought us to this point. So I think that we're not going to resolve the ceiling, what the long-term use of the building is. I think what we should be getting is hear back from the permanent building committee on a realistic cost of maintaining the building, maintaining it in the sense we want to preserve it so that it doesn't fall down. I guess that's, to put it bluntly. Because I don't think anybody here wants to see this historic building deteriorating any further. But as was mentioned earlier by one of the speakers, I think this is the beginning of a little bit more active dialogue with members of the community as to what the ultimate solution might be for the Lansing-Milis building, knowing full well that it is competing with other resources or other sources, other needs of the town, which we haven't really mentioned here, and one of those is going to be discussed later in this meeting, which is open space acquisition. So I personally would like to ask the permanent building committee, who will take you up on your offer, to take a look at this and determine whether or not there's some interim cost that we could incur to maintain the building, I'll call it, I forget the term you use, stabilize the building, with a commitment from this board and others in the community to continue with the conversation about what the best use of the building is. We all have good ideas. We want to make sure the good ideas are realistic, and we don't want to have this dialogue going on for the next 20 years. So that's what I would like to do at this point, to close the conversation. The permanent building committee has asked if we would like them to go ahead and do some more work around stabilization of the building, and I'm sure it's not going to come back. It's still going to cost a fair amount of money, but we need to get an idea as to whether or not, in the short run, that amount of money is something that we can accommodate. And frankly, the issue is whether or not we have any sort of proposal for stabilization to take to town meeting in May. Because if we don't do it in May, there is no money until November. So there is some urgency here. So I think, Mr. Clacco, you and your team could take a look at that and see if we could come up with some realistic estimate of what we might do to stabilize the building. That at least we can do while we're committed to further dialogue among community members to talk about what's the best use for the Lansing Memorial Building, the Lansing-Milis Building, over time. And I would urge everyone in the community who may be listening to take a look at their report. It's very thorough. It talks about the issues. I don't think it's, I think it's important not to get totally scared off by the numbers, but there's a lot of analysis of this building in that report that helps, would help us to inform the conversation. So, Mr. Clacco, we eagerly await return from your folks at a later meeting to continue this conversation. Is that reasonable?
It is. And just to confirm, Mr. McCaffrey, what we're proposing is to go back to the architect to get a defined scope of work that we can put out on the street and competitively bid as we're required to do for municipal construction at prevailing wage.
Right.
Ms. Rosenfeld. And we will be back with you with whether there's a cost to prepare that scope of work, and then, secondly, what that scope of work is so that we can take action on it as soon as possible.
Thank you. Because even though it's not an immediate, there is urgency, and the reason I brought up the history from 1999 is we have sort of kicked this can down the road for the last 20 years or so. We have the good fortune that the building is still standing, so maybe the top of the clock is ticking. So, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I'd like to move on with our agenda because we have others who are waiting patiently for us to deal with their business. The next order of business we have is the MS4 stormwater services revision proposal. Karen, if you can go back to the, are you sharing online? Are you sharing your screen?
I'm sharing again now, yes. What would you like to see, sir?
Just the toolbox would be good. No, if you just at least scroll down to the subject, that would be helpful.
I'm just trying to, hold on. I'm just trying to, hold on. Hold on, everything's in the way here. Won't let me get to it, spare with me.
In the meantime, uh, we have this, we have uh Mr. McKay and Ms. Frederick from Kleinfelter. Maybe you could start the conversation, Mr. McKay, about what you're looking for the board to do this evening.
Mr. Chairman, um, this contract was in front of you in August. It was uh, all the substance was approved in August. But if you remember, when we think back how far back August was, uh, we were looking at maybe updating the, the board on what's being spent, especially towards um the stormwater management engineering services. And we were gonna do it last week, actually. It, it was on the agenda, then it was off, it was on, it was off for the past, I would say almost uh month and a half with your meetings. Uh, it was take, it was put on and taken off so many different times. And then, after last week's discussion, the last meeting's discussion, I asked Betsy just to put it all in one nutshell of, of what is remaining left of services that we need for the department in, in the town to be um compliant with, with the state regulation. And most of these funds left are exactly that. Um, the, the annual report has to be done. Um, we're past the um, the hearing stages. I mean, I know there's still many of them out there pending, that the board still hasn't made a decision on, on where we're going with that. I can report that that was a very expensive um cost for the uh engineering services. I mean, that was over sixteen thousand dollars. Um, what we're looking for, it, you know, we hope someday, we should be, we should be almost there with most of that work being done in-house. But last year, when I proposed a service for somebody to start working on that in-house, um, that position never made it to the town meeting vote. So I were, you know, I'll be asking for that again. I mean, most of these services, it was, when you were there, when we first started this, it was always the idea that most of these services will be through Kleinfelter and as years go, go by, we would be doing uh ninety percent of these um tasks in-house. Um, we hit a big milestone this year. We do a lot of, uh, we don't, we don't do a little. We do all the testing, the asphalt testing, uh, that, that's in-house. That was in the, the first scope of work um that's already been paid for. So um, I think Betsy sent out an email to the board with the scope of work and, you know, why we came to this decision. Again, it, it was back in August when we thought this, we thought it was a good idea to come back to the board, you know, um, when we hit milestones. And when it gets to a point where uh it, it exceeds what I can sign and then definitely what the town administrator can sign, and anything after that, it has to go to the uh, the select board. I mean, engineering services, um, you know, if we kept it on the five thousand, ten thousand dollar below that, you know, it, it, you know, legally, we, we could, could continue to do that. But um, so Betsy will explain that the scope of what's left of the, of the total thirty-five thousand dollars in that, it, you know, like last year, that doesn't mean we're gonna spend that thirty-five thousand dollars. It's scope of work with hours that we put towards each task. And, and again, it doesn't mean that we, it, it, it's up to thirty-five thousand dollars that we would ask for the uh board to let the town administrator sign that contract.
Okay, yeah. Karen, can you just scroll up to page five here, which I think summarizes the tasks? This is the documentation. I'd like you to just go to the fifth page of this letter.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I think Karen just stepped out for a second. I can uh, she's probably back in a minute.
Wow, that's interesting. Okay. Betsy, are you, Ms., Ms., are you on?
Yes, I, I'm happy to sort of just give you the, the broad strokes and, and um we can capture um that on the graphic when Karen gets back. But uh, as, as Jim mentioned, all of this work, the, the original scope of services that um was presented in August of twenty twenty was, I think it was a fifty-five thousand dollar uh scope, which included um about uh a twenty, I don't have the exact numbers now in front of me, but there, there was um a, a task that was related to the utility um billing cycle, the master file update um for the stormwater utility and some on-call services in addition, um as, as needed. Um, and those, um, there is still a portion of those on-call services value that, as Jim mentioned, that's still available. Um, that's just time and materials on-call. All the other services that are still remaining, um, that are represented in this proposal are all obligations under the town's MS4 general permit. So um, as you know, there are certain milestones associated with that, referring to um updates to regular documentation, so that these are maintained as sort of dynamic reflection of the work that you're doing and planning going forward. Um, and um, things such as the um IDDE plan update and training. As Jim mentioned, the, the town is now undertaking more of this kind of activity themselves, um, which is the intent, you know, going forward. Um, a portion of that um was part of the earlier um element of this contract as well. So each of these things are prescribed in your permit and they all are due by um the end of this uh permit year. Um, and the expectation is that between now and June thirtieth, we would be completing all of the activities that are represented in this um uh contract. Um, I'm happy to answer any specific questions you have about any one of these tasks. Um, I did, did wanna mention to you as well, um, Jim may be aware of this as well, um, that EPA is really stepping up um their audit processes. Um, we're actually supporting a, a couple of clients right now who recently have been informed that they're being audited. Um, and part of that is their efforts to take a look at, at um this transition to the new, this represents the new permit. There was a two thousand and three permit that extended all the way to twenty sixteen, and now you're under this new permit and, and EPA is really beginning to look at how communities are sort of stepping up their game a little bit. Um, so I, I, I'm just acknowledging that, that I, you know, the town is in a good place. It's maintained um compliance and it has continued to work towards building a, a robust program that the, the town ultimately will take over themselves. Um, and beyond that, I'm, I'm open to any questions you may have.
Sorry, I'm back, Mr. Chair. Where would you like to, what page would you like to be on?
Keep going, to the fifth page of the letter, which is just the head notes of the tasks.
This one?
There you go. There, that's it. So this is covering a uh update of the, of the plan, the uh, uh, illicit discharge, other programming implementation support, training, public education, et cetera, phosphorus control. Those are tasks, just to clarify. Each of those items are our responsibility to report on these items under the MS4 permit. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Um, so we have the obligation to make these reports. And this contract, which we entered into back in uh a number of months ago, was to ask for Kleinfelter to help us complete those tasks, help our in-house staff as well as uh um, have Kleinfelter uh participate in it. Clearly, this is all, as Mr. McKay sort of indicated, all of this reporting requirement is new to this permit. New in the sense that it wasn't, didn't exist four or five years ago. Is that right?
Correct.
So this is all additional work that we have to do, which we have chosen to do through our stormwater utility, uh, but it's not activity that we, um, I mean, I don't mean to suggest that we've never taken care of the system, but this is certainly required to do this. And the issuing agency is who?
EPA.
Yes, the EPA.
Yes, this is, this, this is a federal permit that's, that's currently, DEP is a co-essentially uh jurisdictional authority, but it, it is a federal permit under, in Massachusetts.
Right. So co-defendant is the EPA.
Co-defendant.
Okay. So, um, what we're being asked to do is not to increase the contract level, right?
That's correct.
Um, but to um certify that these remaining tasks are the ones that we accept and these costs are the ones we accept. And this takes us till when?
June thirtieth.
June thirtieth, fiscal year. And let's just clarify again, this, the money here has been appropriated, it's just a matter of us, uh, so it's not additional cost, right?
That's correct.
Okay. So questions from the board members?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Jermaine?
I have a question really directed to our, our town administrator. And that is, I'm certain you've been reviewing this with our director of the DPW. Are we taking any actions to be able to do more of this in-house? And don't get me wrong, I appreciate what Kleinfelter does, their professionalism isn't being questioned. The question from my perspective is, what more can we do in-house so that we have in-house people who are familiar enough with these procedures that we can begin to produce some of this and not have to spend the monies externally?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Zinski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, yes, an answer to that, I, I know that uh as, as Betsy had said earlier, um, we are in the process of continuing to train uh, uh, the employees within the DPW to expand uh their tasks in this area. Uh, I've also had conversations uh with the DPW director about um the possibility of, of having a town engineer at some point down the road. We've talked about this off and on for probably a couple of years. Um, and with continued increase in regulatory requirements on the community, I think it is something that we need to look at. Uh, but in the interim, I think that we have made great strides in um, in being able to transfer a lot of this work onto the staff. Uh, but having said that, the staff are at times spread pretty thin. So it's a delicate balance, I think we are trying to make that transition. Um, and we will continue to do so as time goes on.
Even on, on that note, I, during my budget presentation, I can get more in, in depth with, with the procedures and how we're moving forward with this. Uh, there must be, there has to be, someday we're gonna have to invest into the billing procedures. Um, we're working with the um, with Carol's department on looking at, figuring out the best way to uh add on new billing clients to the, to the service. Uh, most of that is still being done, outsourced, being done by Kleinfelter. Uh, most of the larger developments that have been built and are still being built, you know, that service is still being outsourced. Um, not so much in need of a, a, an engineer to do that, I mean, that's something that can be done in-house. Uh, we have to look at the antiquated, um, which I've been reporting to the, to the select board for the past three, four years of the MUNIS system. The MUNIS system cannot and it will not accept the billing procedures that we have. So a good chunk of that is being outsourced to Kleinfelter over each billing cycle. Each billing cycle we bill out, um, it, it cost us a, a, such a large percentage on just getting the bills out each year, let alone adding the new um clients on, um, that that it's just not, it's, so Kleinfelter right now, each year, does the bill run, they upload it and then we download it onto the MUNIS system. And the MUNIS system, um, where there's so, there's so few, and I think I reported the last, at our last week, uh, in, in August about this, with that, um, and I did look, I did reach out to different towns to see if we could come up with a, a, a system. And um, most people, for this type of billing that do have stormwater enterprise funds and billing, they don't use the MUNIS system because it's just not um a friendly type of course. Uh, so we are working on that. Um, the, the idea of the, the hearing and looking when people.
Can you please mute?
There's somebody on this call who should be muted because we're having side conversations with profanity included. I want that stopped and whoever it is to put themselves on mute. We're not gonna tolerate that at these meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And in closing, um, on, on this, this fifty-five thousand dollars, I think if we looked at the first year that we started the billing procedure, we were upwards of engineering services of paying of seventy-five thousand dollars in our first year. Our second year, it went down to sixty-four. And in this year, we dropped it down because of the training from Kleinfelter for our staff to go out and start doing the testing and everything else. So again, during our budget presentation, we'll have a, a, hopefully a source of how we can even handle that next year. Thank you.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes, thank you. Um, so just, just so that I understand when the right place and time is to further discuss some of this, I definitely have some more questions and thoughts regarding the um billing challenges with the MUNIS system and so forth. I assume that there's a better time than now for that. So at this moment, I just wanted to confirm that this is essentially part of an existing contract that's already been approved, money already allocated, just for uh simplicity and ability to um, to pay the authorized payment of the funds that we're doing this new contract. Correct?
That's your absolutely one hundred percent correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Then we'll move to take a vote. The vote, we're being asked to vote to approve the um, what do you call it, the extension of this contract to cover the material set forth in the contract letter dated, what's the date? February eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one. And authorize the town administrator to sign the associated contract. So I will make that motion.
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded to approve the extension of the contract and in con, I don't wanna say that, to approve the contract letter of February eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one from Kleinfelter and authorize the town administrator to sign the associated task order. I will poll the board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
That motion is carried unanimously. And I think that from the point of view of the board, we would like to see, as part of the budget conversation with the DPW, um, some thoughts on how this could be re-engineered and taken in-house for fiscal twenty-two.
Thank you. Yep, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda. Uh, oh, Ms. Frederick, Ms. Frederick, thank you for joining us. We appreciate it.
Good night. Thank you very much.
All right. Next item is an MVP grant uh request. This is from Mr. Weiss and Mr. McKay. Mr. Weiss, you wanna lead off or Mr. McKay? Which of you?
Hi.
Mr. Weiss.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman? Yeah, well, we saw the MVP, the Municipal Vulnerability Perishance Program, which many of you um here tonight um participated in a couple of years ago. Uh, the result of that is that we qualify for a number of grants that will allow us uh, allow us to be proactive um when it comes to climate change and the effects of climate change on Milis's environment. Um, right now, you may know, we're working with the Charles River Watershed Association on one of those grants, uh, along with uh twelve, fifteen other communities in the upper Charles River uh area and working on a, producing a model that will uh help us in terms of riverine flooding. So when there's a great big storm coming to So, when there's a great big storm coming in 2026, we can actually be prepared for knowing what areas along the river would be affected uh, by a gigantic storm in the future. What we're talking about tonight is the flood resilience master plan. Karen, you got that up? Yes, thank you.
Oh, is that all right?
This has been proposed to us by, uh, the engineering group Brown Caldwell. Um, this is a plan, and this is one that Millis is going on its own. Um, and this one concerns finding, uh, locations where stormwater runoff, not riverine flooding, but stormwater runoff will cause flooding, and help us to prevent damage or mitigate the damage. Uh, the results of this would be a, a model that, again, helps us kind of look into the future as climate change affects storms. Um, we know a number of current locations that are susceptible to flooding uh, from our hazard mitigation plan that Mr. McKay worked on with the emergency management team. But this will help us prepare for the future and to identify the strategies that we can use to prevent flooding and finding the, uh, the funding to do that. And, um, as the, as we progress through the 21st century, we're looking more now on things called nature-based solutions, green infrastructure. Uh, sometimes you don't have to build, um, a concrete culvert or a dam when you can do something in terms of plantings and gratings in the area that caused floods to begin with. Um, in any case, the, um, MVP would be, uh, the program, the state program would be funding the cost of the, uh, model to 75%. The town would be responsible for 25%, but much of that, uh, 25% could be in-kind. So, it could be some of the staff of, uh, DPW, for instance, uh, doing some of the measuring, uh, or myself working on administration. Um, and, uh, you see, on the screen, you can see the, uh, the information that came from Brown Caldwell on the cost and exactly what it would do.
Mr. Chair, my two cents for this is, um, it's not that the town administrator hasn't really seen all this, he hasn't looked at it, reviewed it. Uh, we have not, you know, with me being on vacation the past two weeks and Bob not being in the office, um, we really haven't had time to sit down with the town administrator and fully discuss this. But where it's getting close to budget season, um, you know, Bob asked if we could, you know, bring it to you for some sort of a discussion, and we still need to talk to, um, to Mike about the town administrator.
Well, it says in the materials here that we have to submit an expression of interest by February 26th. Is that a real date?
Uh, yeah, that is a real date, uh, it's a short form that just puts us into the queue. Well, it gives us some time before we actually go and submit a, an application.
So, meaning that what we would do is we would submit the, we would submit for the grant, but, um, the funding source would have, we could come at the, if it had to go to a town meeting, and we could just say that we just can't fund it.
Well, I mean, I certainly wouldn't wanna commit ourselves to something that has not been thoroughly vetted by the administration here. On the other hand, what do we have to lose by filling in the form?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I, I agree. I think, um, we're just holding a place in line that if we determine for any reason further down the road that it's not an appropriate time for us to move forward with this, we can withdraw at no liability to the town. So, um, but we did wanna get the board's authorization to at least that, uh, submit a letter of interest.
Okay, so, but I do think that from my point of view anyway, any conversation related to a commitment of up to $50,000 in cash or kind is something that we need to understand, that that's the town's portion. We need to understand what's involved with that, and where we'd get the money if we have to pay for it. We have to pay the money.
Absolutely.
Um, comments from the board members?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Jermaine?
I happen to read a comment that, um, we are looking at a form that's an expression of interest, which sounds to me like it's non-binding, as the town administrator and the director of DPW have noted. Uh, it does appear to have a date on it that is important. So, from that perspective, since we're not committing the town to spending any funds whatsoever, I think it's important that we move forward on that need, and then as rapidly as possible thereafter, uh, get the information necessary so that we can make a determination as to how we wanna proceed for the future on this.
Ms. Underhill?
Um, I would, I would agree. So, I move to approve and authorize the submittal of the form to, of expression of interest.
I'll second that. For the, I've got, for the flood resilience, the master plan, uh, or actually, it's the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Action Grant Program.
So, it's been moved and seconded. Moved and seconded for the town to authorize the submission of the expression of interest. Um, I noticed that Andrew Goldberg has shown up again?
Yeah, he has.
Maybe he has a business development responsibility at the new firm. I moved and seconded, I'll poll the board, Mr. McCaffrey, yes, Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
All right, that motion is carried. So, uh, we'd ask, uh, Mr. Weiss and Mr. McKay and, um, Mr. Zinski to work on submission, and then we'll hear more about this in accordance with the key dates and next steps that you have outlined in this document. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item we have on agenda is, um, asking those, hopefully who've shown tremendous patience with us, from the AVEZA team. Um, now I see this koala bear looking at me.
I'm sorry.
Um, but this is the, uh, presentation of the, um, host community agreement with, uh, the AVEZA folks who are looking to open a manufacturing facility in Millis. So, we have town council with us, um, Ms. Bederoff. Um, can you just speak to the board briefly about what the, what we have in front of us tonight?
Sure, so, uh, the draft HCA that we found with the folks at AVEZA, their intention is to create a marijuana product manufacturing facility at 1375 Main Street. Um, essentially, this mirrors the other HCA's, uh, with a 3% quarterly sale community impact payment, um, based on, on the products that they're producing out of that facility. Um, it's, it's generally the same as all the other agreements that you've, um, you've seen in the past. It maintains, um, you know, the right to review the records, accounting records, should you need to review those to determine if the community impact fee payment is, um, appropriate, or appropriately calculated, rather. Um, it includes a non-challenge to real estate taxes and personal property taxes to the extent, um, they won't be seeking a nonprofit status or something that would eliminate taxation in, in that area. Um, it allows the approval of an onsite manager, has safety measures for prevention of diversion, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, so pretty, um, pretty standard from what you've been seeing before. But again, this is a manufacturing facility, not a grow facility, and not a retail facility.
The location would, um, falls within the zoning area that we set aside for this kind of business, subject to special permits, et cetera. Um, so this is just a matter, it's another step along the trail. I would, um, share with the board and the community, there has been a good amount of negotiation between the business and the town, um, all of which was, uh, um, from my perspective, um, completed with a lot of professionalism and intent to reach agreement. So, I would like to give the, uh, the folks from AVEZA the opportunity to just speak to the board at this point, um, if you choose to.
Sure, I'll say a few things. You guys hear me?
You waited long enough.
No, I just wanted to say I really, uh, appreciate your guys' professionalism in the town and your thoroughness to go through the process with our group and, uh, the facility and allowing us to, um, work with you guys and in the town. I look forward to it, um, and just appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the board members? I will ask a couple of questions that are process-oriented, which have nothing to do with the HCA, um, just for information purposes. Um, sort of where does this all stand with the CCC? Um, and, you know, sort of from your planning perspective, what do you see as the next step? And then, how do you get from this to open for business?
Sure, so we actually, uh, have completed the state application. We also already, um, we were able to actually open Cannabis Banking, um, as well. Uh, so we're just in this process of finishing this, uh, community host agreement with the city. We have the lease finalized with the property. And, um, once we have this, then we would, um, actually submit the state application and, um, should be a fairly quick process. I think that we have, uh, if everything goes good with that and a special permit, 90 to 120 days will be open.
Well, that'll be world record time.
Yeah, I mean, we, uh, we have EE, uh, in the process, and we're also, we're down the path in, um, two retails in another place. And we actually went through the city process, and we're into the state process. And the state actually gave us feedback within, uh, about five days of submitting the state process. So, they were pretty, pretty on, on top of it.
Yeah, that's pretty amazing, actually. Um, okay. So, um, that's sort of the expectation at this point. Any further questions from the board members?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Jermaine?
As you proceed down the road for your manufacturing, I'm assuming you're going through coordinating with the police and the other local officials in town to ensure the integrity of the building and the supplies, the proper protection and everything else.
Mr. Chair, I can speak to that if...
I appreciate that.
Yeah, so built-in HCA's are, are standards for security in that they have to submit security plans to the police chief. We obviously don't wanna submit that, um, in a, in a public session, so, um, so as to alert potential bad-doers, I don't know what the term would be, um, from, from getting that kind of, uh, information. So, we do have, um, language in there about providing an emergency contact information, providing security plans to the, to the chiefs. Um, some of the emergency issues will be dealt with at the special permit hearings, so fire access and things of that nature. Um, but it is a document that provides us all the tools, um, that we would need should something not be done correctly to enforce and ensure that that was, um, handled appropriately by AVEZA. So, um, so that's right there in the document.
That's excellent, thank you very much.
Other questions from the board? Or the public?
Could I ask a question, Mr. Chairman?
Certainly.
Ellen Rosenfeld again. Um, so have you received PCR yet? Can you hear me?
Myself?
Yes.
A provisional?
Yeah.
No, we're not, we can't get a provisional until we get, uh, host community agreement, and then there's a special permit. We can, we can submit the state application for a provisional once we have the HCA.
Okay, that's why I, I was assuming that. And, but a minute ago, I thought you said that you think you're gonna be open in 90 days? Is that what you said?
You're right, I should correct myself there. We should have a provisional in, uh, in 90 days. But we don't, we don't have, uh, a lot of interior, uh, renovations or anything like this. The space is pretty optimized for, there's a couple rooms with carpet, there's no, um, aside from security protocols, there's some flooring changes, um, nothing, nothing that's crazy in the cosmetics. And in that 90 days, if we were given a provisional, we'll be able to, if, let's say they accelerate that provisional pretty quickly, um, we could be open in 120 days. It's being optimistic.
Okay, um, and then...
Very optimistic, but...
Yeah, you think...
In our line, in our business, we gotta, gotta have hope, right?
Listen, I hear you. Um, are you gonna be doing, are you gonna be doing your own extracting in that space? Or are you guys gonna buy the oil and mix it in?
Um, so I do my own type of, uh, extraction process that is not chemical-based.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Any other questions among members of the industry, please? Feel free to call each other.
I will, don't worry.
Tony, if you don't know Ellen, you will.
I think, like, she's, she owns, uh, Retail maybe?
Yes.
Yes, I've heard, I've heard the name before.
Absolutely.
Love to link with you at some point. I'm, I, I create all kinds of products and would love to create a product for you.
Okay, great.
We are a business-friendly board of select, or select board.
You'll get your, you'll get your commission, don't worry.
We're looking for people to throw into the Lansing Memorial Building. So, folks, we'll get back to both of you.
Be a hot cafe.
Any other questions? So, what we're looking for this evening is the board to authorize signature of the HCA. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And there's one thing that's required that I don't see yet.
Are you waiting for something from me?
No, I'm waiting for the check.
Oh!
Oh, yeah, no problem.
Okay, so, um, I would make a motion that the board approve the host community agreement and authorize the signature upon the receipt of the $25,000 initial payment.
No problem.
I'll second that.
So, it's been moved and seconded. Uh, I'll poll the board, Mr. McCaffrey, yes, Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
That motion is carried unanimously. Thank you very much, and, uh, I appreciate your holding on through the rest of the meeting. Um, and, again, there's been a number of meetings. This is, or, this is an agreement that has arrived at after, you know, reasonably significant, um, conversation and negotiation. And we appreciate your willingness to make some compromises on your end so that we can feel comfortable that we're representing the interests of the community in welcoming this new business to the town of Millis. So, thank you.
All right, guys, thank you very much for your time and everything tonight.
Okay.
Thank you so much for having me, Mr. Chair.
Uh, if you could just hold on, please?
Oh, sure, yeah.
Because the question I think may come up during the next quick conversation or I'd like to get your input.
Oh, yeah.
And then, on our agenda is the draft of the annual town meeting warrant list. Um, if we could just throw that on the board, um, and the reason I wanted, uh, town council just to make a comment, at the beginning of our meeting, I motion, I mentioned the fact that we may be looking potentially for another, uh, warrant article dealing with, uh, uh, any delivery businesses, marijuana delivery businesses that may wanna, uh, locate in Millis. And, um, I would just like to ask the town council, just very briefly, have outlined for us how this may, how our existing zoning by law may or may not address this new form of business.
Yeah, so, so one thing, um, is certain, we didn't know what delivery was gonna look like when, when you all passed your zoning bylaw, um, because it wasn't yet approved. So, so that, to the extent it wasn't contemplated, um, for sure, there's, there's possibly area to improve upon it. Um, and make it expressly allowed, either subject to special permit or however the town would like to proceed in that direction. Um, interestingly enough, uh, the CCC has indicated that, um, it, delivery is not considered a subset of retail, um, so it would likely not fall under the cap, um, that you've set on retail. Now, there are two distinct pieces of delivery, um, that have different impacts. So one is a delivery which is more like, I liken it to like Grubhub, where you go to the local restaurant, XYZ restaurant, and a delivery person picks it up and delivers it to your house. They, they are not buying the marijuana from the retailer, um, and, and selling it back to the consumer, they're just doing a delivery service like a UPS, right? And then there's another subset of delivery that has, uh, a different kind of take. They can repackage the delivery, uh, the marijuana rather, and then sell it. So that is, um, an exchange different than just providing the delivery service. Um, and I view them a little bit differently, um, in terms of impact because the delivery that is the Grubhub delivery, uh, type establishment, really, you just have to deal with the vehicles and oftentimes, or the proposals I have seen, let's put it that way, um, have had the vehicles stored at each delivery operator's house, you know, it was like a minivan and they stored at their house. So it's not a big UPS facility. Um, whereas the, the folks that are, that are repackaging the marijuana may need a larger facility or an area to do that work of repackaging, et cetera. Um, so it may have a different impact in terms of zoning. Um, so it's something that we should really look at and what I, what I said to the chair is I could provide a couple of options that, um, the, the town could consider through the planning board. Obviously, there's a public hearing process. We'll analyze your zoning bylaw. We didn't draft that bylaw, but we can analyze the zoning bylaw and see where, um, tweaks can and, and should, or, or maybe should be made, uh, for presentation to town meeting.
Great, thank you. Because I, I do think it's important for us to understand that we, uh, wanna be sure that we have the appropriate level of regulation, particularly if a business is gonna physically locate somewhere. Um, our team and folks on the select board, the retail marijuana committee, the planning board, the town meeting, we spent a lot of time on trying to develop a zoning bylaw that would enable us to reasonably regu, regulate the location of these businesses. And if this, because it wasn't contemplated at the time, if this, uh, you know, falls outside of that and we have no ability to regulate it, that's not where we wanna be. So, thank you for the input. We will work on this and try to come up with something. The time is, uh, fairly limited, um, so that we, you know, get ourselves in a position where we can engage with the planning board and get the requisite, uh, notice and whatnot finished if we're gonna act on this at the May town meeting. I mean, there's enough time, but we don't have a lot of time to waste. Mr. Jermaine?
Can I add something?
I mean, Mr. Jermaine first.
Oh, go ahead, sorry.
That's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, if you don't mind, Ms. Federoff, I do have a question that really comes to you more than any of the rest of us, because I heard the term repackaging. And at that point, I began to question in my own mind, how does that differ from resale? If I can go in there, take some product, repackage it and resell it as a result to somebody?
Yeah, and the way I believe it works is they actually, and they're, the first type of operator is called a mari, marijuana courier. That's the Grubhub operator. The second kind is called, I think it's just called a delivery operator, I'm, I'm blanking on the, the wording. But what I think the process is, is that they buy the marijuana and then make it their own product. So, so it's, and it's not like making, making it all, make it, making it their own through a remanufacture. So you have your, your flour, which you can consume without processing it, you know, you just smoke it. And then you have your manufactured pro, uh, products, which are like your oils and, and things that are, are created into gummies and things like that. And then, um, well, that's really it. So I think they're not, they're not manufacturing the product, but rather re, repackaging it and selling it as Joe's Marijuana instead of, you know, Frank's Marijuana or whatever. Um, and, and that is a sale, so I, I believe it comes out as a sale. Now, I don't know, and, and maybe even Ellen knows this, but I don't know how DOR is, is characterizing that sale and whether or not it would be subject to the local sales tax. That piece, I'm not 100% sure on yet. Um, and I don't know that DOR has opined on that yet. Um, but I understand your point. But it's, it's different from retail in that it's not brick and mortar. You can't walk into the facility, you have to order it, um, however you do online, and then they deliver it to your home. Now, the courier license, for example, I think, and I see Ellen on the line, I may chime in here too, but the, the existing retailers may choose to get a courier license to deliver their own products as well. So, there are some other implications that we have to think about and how these licenses are intertwined sometimes. Even though they're independent licenses, they may be, um, used by existing licensees.
I, I appreciate that. I, I guess what I'm going to ask at this point, and I'll ask it through the chair, if I may, that we need, at least as this board, and I suspect as a community, a much better understanding of these distinctions...
Yeah.
...and options and implications, and ultimately how they lead, not just to zoning, but to a variety of other issues with respect to tracking and so forth. So, it just suddenly opens up a whole new line of questioning on my part...
Yeah.
...to my own interest of the process, so...
Yeah, and it's, I'm not concerned about diversion in that the CCC's seed to sale tracking system is, is very precise. I mean, they track it from, you know, from, from its baby inception seed to the time it goes to the consumer. So, um, and, and each step in the process, that, that product is tracked. So, I'm, I'm not that concerned with that aspect of it. I'm concerned with whether or not we capture the zoning appropriately, because some of the impacts are really, you know, negligible, whereas other impacts may be significant. So I have one town where they have a lot of retailers downtown, but you may not want a clo, they have a nice, you know, um, glass front building and all of that, and that may not be appropriate for the more warehouse type look that I envision, um, that second type of operator to be looking like. Um, so that's the piece that's a little bit tricky that we're gonna have to wrap our heads around. But I think what I could do is come to you all with sort of a more comprehensive presentation about the two types and, and some various options for regulating them.
Yeah, I think that's kinda where we are. I wanted to make everybody aware of the issue. Uh, we're not coming with a solution, but, um, we do have this developing ear, issue and, you know, some potential interest from potential businesses. So, I don't know, Ellen, if you had something you wanted to add, you said?
I, I do, because I don't think that, I don't, I'm not sure you appreciate the difference between these two licenses. They are completely, completely different. The first one, courier license, where the, the van driver literally places the order at my sales facility, they come to my retail store, they're, everything's packaged, it has the customer's, the purchaser's name on it. I've done all that work. The courier comes in, purchases it for my cost and, and then goes and delivers it to the intended party. All the orders are already prepaid, pre-done, and they deliver them. If that courier doesn't empty out his or her van by the end of the day, that courier has to return whatever is left over in that van back to me and it goes into my vault. And, and, and the CCC recognized, now that was the type of license that was actually, that we voted on. That was one of the five licenses that we voted on, um, with the, with the, uh, with the legalization, um, along with the, um, you know, the, the, the disco there where they could sell, they haven't done that license yet, and then the cultivation, blah, 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 blah. The CCC realized that that license was not viable. How is that van driver gonna make any money? They're gonna make what? A, a $5 tip? So, they changed it. And this new license, which I refer to as a warehouse license, the courier, the, not the courier, but the van driver, the business person, comes to my cultivation facility and buys wholesale pounds of flour, uh, bags of gummies, goes back to their warehouse. That, that means they have a building now. Their warehouse has to have all the, all the bells and whistles that my retail facility has, all the, um, the alarms and the tracking and the vault and order fulfillment and seat to everything. It, and it's a, a physical building. And they have, they have the HVAC equipment to keep the product moist. And they package, they buy their own packaging, they put their own name on it, they weigh it. And then they go and they make their sale. And they can do that from a lot of different cultivation facilities. That's their business. But it's a building, not just a van anymore. It's a building with security, exterior lighting, everything I have. The only difference is, people don't come to them, they go to people. There's no sales floor. It's the only difference. So, you need to, just what you did when, when rec was passed and medical was passed, right? You need to zone for this, because it can't be within 500 feet of a school. You know, they can't go into their father's basement and build a vault. So, this is quite different than anything that, that was, was anticipated, because the CCC just made it up. And it's different than what you have in zoning right now. It doesn't fall under either cultivation or retail, right? It's a warehouse, whatever that looks like. So, that's my, my fill in. And also, as Kate mentioned, I can right now, um, distribute to the medical community. I can do that, I can. But this license, this warehouse license, as well as the, um, um, courier license for recreational, that is limited to, um, social equity people for three years. So there'll be no competition from me.
Right, that's true.
Right?
Yeah, that's true.
And that three year time doesn't start ticking until the very first one opens, so it could be five years. Um, so, that's, that's what I got.
Mr. Chair?
I'm sorry, who was that?
Uh, Richard Nichols.
Yes, Mr. Nichols, sorry.
That's fine. Hey, um, a question to, uh, Ms. Federoff, um, is there a way for the, uh, town to put in a moratorium on this? Because this is something we never anticipated to, for us to discuss and come up with a way to make it work.
Yeah, so unlike the general regulation of, um, rec marijuana where it was really considered, um, and, and, you know, they put a timeframe on, on how your moratoria should work, um, there's no express language in there regarding that, but it, like anything else, you can always say, um, you know, and that impose a moratorium, for sure. I guess the question becomes, um, whether or not you should, because the one difference between this use and other uses that are regulated through zoning is the HCA piece, right? So there is huge discretion to deny an HCA, um, to allow this type of use. So, the Board of Selectmen can exercise its discretion to deny an HCA if, for example, they don't feel like we zoned for it and there's no possibility of, of regulating that through zoning and we couldn't get it together for the town meeting in May. And so we're not gonna issue an HCA until October, something like that. Um, whereas it's kinda cumbersome to do a moratorium, um, and, and, um, and then have to repeal it, you know what I mean? So, in that sense, like, yes, the answer is yes, but should you?
So, Mr. Chair? My question to you is that, um, with that being said, I, I think that goes back to the select board to decide if it makes more sense to have this regulated, uh, through you versus the planning board taking action on it.
Sure, I, I'm not sure it's either or at the end of the day, because if there's gonna be, it's described as a physical location for this business, then it certainly, you know, potentially has a zoning issue. We still have to give, I mean, under the, we still have regulatory authority under the licensing provisions, under the HCA provisions, so, and they have to meet our health, uh, board of health requirements. Um, so I think it's gonna be a little bit of all of the above. Now, whether we have the, as you said, the permanent solution or we go for an interim solution, we're gonna have to figure that out. But, well, I don't think, what, I think the point is we don't leave it without addressing it, because we are potentially vulnerable because of this new, newly created business, uh, vulnerable to someone locating here without any regulation of that. That we don't wanna have.
No, and I, and I agree on that. I think we should, can, but, work on this together.
Something to do with our spare time. All right. Um, so, in a way, I don't wanna go any further than this, because, again, in terms of, I think it was legitimate to com, have the conversation in the context of, uh, our outline of the, uh, town meeting warrant, but I do think that full notice there to all six particular people will be required through having a more explicit agenda item in a future meeting. So, and it may, we'll see, we'll work with town council and see if there's a way to come up with some parameters here and we'll get it on our agenda as quickly as possible. Trying to be as respectful as we can be that planning board has its own issues it has to deal with if in fact there's a zoning requirement and hearings required, et cetera. So, more to come on this. So, Ms. Federoff? Thank you.
Thank you so much again for having me, and good luck with the rest of your meeting.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Zininski, you've got an outline here. We've got it on item 21-053, dealing with at least our initial outline of warrant articles that are going to appear, at least at this stage of the game, based upon, you know, the opening and closing of the warrant. So if you could quickly go through these from the point of view of the citizens of people, that would be helpful.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, certainly. So looking at the list that's up on the screen and the Board has, the first 12 items roughly are fairly standard on the, on our annual town meeting article list, starting with unpaid bills, so prior year bills that have not been paid. The second, which is really adjustments to the FY '21 budget, year-end adjustments that are needed, and we'll know more as we get closer to the town meeting on that. Article three is the omnibus budget for the fiscal year, so that's the big budget article. Articles four, five, and six are enterprise funds. Article seven is our consent agenda, which consists of amendments to the personnel plan, the Board of Health Appointing Authority, revolving funds, and the Community Preservation Fund. Article, actually, articles eight and nine. So we have a project for the Phase Two Walling Map Rehab and for the Open Space Recreation Reserve Fund, the Community Preservation is the MHS dugout project. Then we have the, our annual audit, financial audit for the town. Article 11, our capital items, as reviewed and input forward to the Select Board by the Capital Committee, Capital Planning Committee. We will have some school articles that are put on there on an annual basis that are fairly standard. And then we get into some of the special articles that the Board is going to be looking at, such as the potential purchase of the Bron property off of Village Street under the town's exercise of its rights under Mass. General law, Chapter 61A, the possible street acceptance of the Hickory Hills subdivision. And then we have some zoning bylaw amendments. One is possibly a performance-based solar ordinance. The next is a parking dimensions and compact car parking, which I think is the next item on your agenda this evening to discuss. Then we have an item for a town bylaw change in relation to an item that the Board has discussed a few times, which is possibly setting up a formal waiver for town building project permit fees. Generally, the Board has waived those, I think, the last five or six years on a number of projects. This would simply make that a standard operation for the town. Then we have a town bylaw amendment related to sewer, which currently the Enterprise Committee is reviewing and discussing and will be bringing something back to the Board formally shortly. And then the next three items are really here and highlighted for the Board, some of the issues related to PFAS, the Emergency Response Plan, the PFAS Treatment Design, and the last one is a stormwater-related, which is designing construction of drainage rehab at Village Street and Burke Street. Those three items may end up within the capital article, but we wanted to highlight them here. So in the future version, they may be wrapped up within Item 11, the capital items. And then a few other standard items, articles at the end, which is the Medicare/Medicaid Reinvestment Services, Unemployment Insurance Fund, the OPEP Fund, and the Stabilization Fund. So those are the ones on the draft right now. And as you know, the Board just closed the warrant this evening. We'll be refining this list and filling in information. And I'd expect a more refined list with some additional information. That's your next regular meeting.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I just wanted to add that I just want to remind Mike that we had a, we had one more request today that didn't actually make it onto the draft list, which was an offer to purchase a partial of town-owned land off of Acorn Street. So that is also, we'll have to put that on the draft.
So the Board would have to consider whether or not you'd want to add that on to this warrant or not.
I would say put it on the draft because we're going to have to be as comprehensive as we can. And it did come in before the closing, so. And then we need to have an item for, I'll call it, the Marijuana Regulation zoning bylaw.
Yes.
We discussed tonight. So these are the, basically, the items that have been presented. And at this stage of the game, I think that that's more complete. As many folks know, if others come forward, we have the potential to reopen the warrant. But I want to make sure that this Board is looking at this list of, what is it, 24 or 25 articles, and beginning our consideration of them as we go forward. Okay. So if you can redo that and then circulate it to the Board, that would be helpful.
Very well, thank you.
Next item on our agenda in relation here is zoning bylaw amendments that have been forwarded to us by the Planning Board, asking the Board to consider placing them on the warrant so that the Planning Board can go ahead and schedule its hearings relative to these two items. So I think we had, Ms. Riley, are you going to discuss them with us?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you.
You're welcome. I'm going to join the meeting so far.
Absolutely, I always do. Both of these bylaws have come about, or proposed amendments to the bylaws have come about. The Planning Board has been, has begun reviewing the bylaws and our rules and regulations and trying to update things as we find appropriate. Beginning with the parking dimensions, currently in our bylaws, we have a requirement that minimum parking, a parking space minimum square footage is 189 square feet, which would be nine feet by 21 feet. It has become a standard, almost a standard request that when developers come to us, they ask that we waive that requirement to a reduction of nine feet in width by either 18 or 19 feet in length. And that is a waiver that we generally always grant. So we are just to, you know, clean things up. We are looking to change that on the zoning bylaws to reduce the minimum length from 21 to 19 feet so that it doesn't require a waiver every time a developer comes forward. Anyone have any questions on that one?
This is generally developer in relation to residential, commercial? What is this typically looking at?
It can be anything, any builder, any development that has a parking lot where there are actual parking spaces as opposed to a home with just a driveway, where you're having, for the most part, it would be a commercial industrial or if it is an apartment building, a residential complex where there is a required number of parking spaces. And how do you determine the overall square footage? And that would be impervious space would be based upon.
We had a couple of issues that we have been considering with respect to stormwater and land disturbance permits and whatnot of 40B projects, all of which were multi-dwelling, multi-unit dwellings with parking spaces. So that, this parking space, this zoning bylaw would apply to those kinds of projects, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Can I choose? Oh, sorry.
Other questions from the Board?
Mr. Chairman? Just a clarification, if I may. As I look at the Articles zoning bylaw amendment for compact car parking, is it appropriate for me to ask that question at this time?
I think you will wait and let her talk about that one next.
Okay, I will wait on that.
Because basically, the Planning Board is asking us to consider two articles, is that correct?
That was the next thing I was going to ask. Are these really two separate articles?
Yes, they are.
So anything further?
Mr. Chair, believe you muted yourself.
I'm going to remedial class. It's not working. Thank you. Okay, now, how about the compact car parking provision?
So the compact car provision would allow a developer that would have more than 20 parking spaces to request by special permit that up to 1/3 or 33% of those parking spaces be designated as compact car parking, which would mean they would have an even further reduced parking lot size, by, excuse me, parking space size of eight feet in width by 16 feet in length. This is, differs from the Parking Space Definition Amendment above it in that the minimum, the just standard minimum space would be nine by 19. To utilize the eight by 16, it would be by special permit. A developer would come to us and say, we want to, we want to make a certain percentage of our parking lot available for compact cars. If there is a lot that is less than 20 spaces, this provision would not be available to them because we don't want to create a scenario where there aren't enough sufficient-sized parking spaces available for a standard or larger-sized vehicle. And then therefore, we're creating problems by having, almost in effect, forcing large vehicles to try to park in smaller spaces. This bylaw does go on to distinguish that those spaces would have to be placed contiguous within the parking lot. They couldn't just kind of stick one compact space here and two over in this corner. It would also only apply to perpendicular or angular parking, meaning that parallel parking spaces could not be used as compact car spaces. And then finally, the purpose for this compact car parking would, it would reduce the impervious area of parking lot that a builder would have to have. But whatever they save, whatever square footage they save by not having to have that larger parking lot, they would have to turn that over to open space. So they couldn't utilize that saved impervious area to expand the building. It would be to use it as open space since the whole point of this really is to prevent, to reduce impervious areas. This, again, this compact car parking is only available under special permit, whereas the one above is simply what our minimum standard is for a parking space in any parking lot situation.
So, Mr. Jermaine?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have a couple of questions more for clarification on my part. Part C of this, you used the word at one point contiguous, which makes more sense to me than the word continuous. So I'm just wondering.
That most likely is the fact that I probably type faster than I read. And that, thank you, that actually should say contiguous.
I appreciate that. That's great. The second part is on the offset of small spaces to open space. What if a builder comes to you and says, look, I want, I'll donate an amount of land at another site of X amount more as the offset against a smaller footprint here but to work, expand the building? Is that something that you would even consider?
No.
No, okay.
And that's, the way this is, no, this would, this has been drafted and has, is interpreted to be that the, that additional open space has to be on this property. That would not be transferring it over to another, with another lot wouldn't, would not be something the Planning Board would.
Yeah, that was my whole point. So thank you very much for the clarification.
Absolutely.
Isn't anybody going to ask me to unmute?
I didn't see you speaking yet.
Any other questions? Okay, so I think that what the Planning Board is asking us to do tonight is to vote specifically to place these items on the warrant. So as they go on the warrant, that will enable the Planning Board to hold a hearing relative to these and report back to the town meeting on the results of the hearing.
Correct.
Technically speaking, the draft, we have only one article. So I think just to be safe, and this is particularly important with land use kinds of things, I would ask for a motion for the Board to reopen the warrant so that we may separate these two, and then we'll close the warrant after that. So if I could have a motion to reopen the warrant?
I move to reopen the warrant.
Second.
Moved and seconded. I'll poll the Board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes. Mr. Jermaine, yes.
Thank you. That's, that's fine. My wife speaks for me all the time anyway. Why not you?
Yes, Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
That motion is carried unanimously. So we now have the warrant reopened. So I would make a motion that the Board will place on the warrant for the Springtown meeting the two zoning articles, two zoning bylaw articles. One for parking dimensions and the other for compact car parking.
I'll second that with the modification of the word contiguous for continuous or any other modifications as deemed necessary from a legal perspective.
So noted. So it's been moved and seconded to put these two items as warrant articles on the warrant for the May town meeting. I'll poll the Board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes. Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
That motion is carried unanimously. Now I will take a motion to close the warrant again.
I move that we close the warrant.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for the Select Board to close the warrant for the annual town meeting in May of 2021. I'll poll the Board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes. Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Motion is carried unanimously. Thank you. So I would ask that Karen, you send a memo to the Chair of the Planning Board indicating that the Select Board has placed these items on the warrant?
Will do.
So that they can go ahead and hold their hearings.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, the call for presenting.
Take it in.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
All right. The next item we have on our agenda um is another marijuana article. This one relates to um the licensing from the GTE uh business, the cultivation business. Mr. Gzinski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, uh, the board has gone through this process a few times with um some other establishments um in the community. Um, and the Cannabis Control Commission is requesting um that within sixty days of the notification, um, that's in your packet, that the municipal, that the town confirmed that the applicant's marijuana establishment is in compliance with all municipal bylaws and ordinances. Um, and has asked that the form be completed by the town and sent back to the commission. So I am um based on the the fact that um to the best of our knowledge, they have met all those requirements. I am requesting that the board um vote to uh authorize that this document um be approved and sent back to the uh CCC.
I think you're muted, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, you're muted.
Struggle is real tonight, Jim.
Chairman in training here. Uh, I'm going to get back with the chief and see if he can help me with dispatch. Uh, in any event, um, could you just scroll down to the first page of this cannabis control?
I was madly typing here.
There it is. Yeah. This so this is just note of the municipality that um the commission has completed its review of the application for the GTE business. And we're just confirming that the application is in compliance with local municipal requirements. So this is a fairly formal, you know, it's a fairly standard. It is a standard process. We have three options. You could say they don't comply, or we could say they do comply, or we can say nothing, in which case they get, they can move forward after sixty days. Um, but I would recommend that the board uh vote to um submit to the CCC that this business is in compliance with the local rules and regulations.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Jermaine?
Who should sign this form?
I believe you signed it as the chair.
Up on the board, you could either designate the chair or the town administrator to sign it on behalf of the town. But you would just need a formal, a formal vote either way to make that authorization.
So I think it's uh logistically easier if we have the town administrator do it.
I move that we authorize the town administrator to sign the application for the marijuana product manufacturing license?
I'll second that.
Municipal response to the.
Municipal response.
For GTE.
For GTE.
So it has been moved and seconded to authorize the town administrator to sign the uh municipal response in relation to the application of GTE. Uh, I will poll the board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes. Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Miss Underhill?
Yes.
That motion is carried unanimously. Thank you. I think it's important for us to continue to do these businesses as they go forward. Okay, the next item I have on our agenda is just a checkup uh on our own process to uh town administrator review. Um, where the process involves us completing the form and having a one-on-one conversation with the town administrator and submission of the form to the to town council that will accumulate the com comments so that we can conduct as a board the formal uh public review of the town administrator's uh performance. I will admit that I am a little bit behind the eight ball here. So I still need to do my uh evaluation form. Um, I'm not calling out anybody other than admitting I haven't done it yet, but I would just remind the board members to continue to proceed with that process and hopefully we can conduct uh complete this process uh in March so that we would have uh been able to do the appropriate evaluation of the town administrator's performance.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Jermaine?
May we schedule time with the town administrator to review whenever we can from this point forward?
I think that is appropriate, yes.
Thank you.
Um, okay. Any other questions? All right, we'll move on to item number twenty-one oh fifty-seven. Um, won't need a lot of conversation on the tribe board. Follow up, I think we all, we attended the meeting, we've agreed on a process going forward for uh budget completion of budget work. Um, and I want to thank the board members for their participation. I think it was um good discussion, good conversation. Um, now, all this will depend upon, of course, our ability to um finalize our budget process, but I do think that we're on the right track. Um, in terms of the other meetings, I could just briefly report to you on the um permanent building committee. Um, Chairman Clacco reported on the Lansing Millis Building. The PBC is also working on the DPW project. Um, there was a review of that project uh at its last meeting and approval of bills and invoices. The project is moving along um reasonably successfully. The winter weather has not been a major uh roadblock to continuing to work the project. There is some um footings down over on the site for the office building. So that project is is moving along and hopefully we will continue to have the the good fortune of not having any uh winter weather that actually slows the project down. But at this point, fortunately, that has not happened. Um, are there other committee, uh, other board members who have any things they'd like to report to the rest of the board on their liaison work?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Jermaine?
Um, there are a couple of meetings that I will report to the board on. The first is the enterprise committee. Um, there was a meeting of last week and we talked, actually, you know, last week, we talked about two issues, the standard two. The first one was PFAS. We had a very good briefing from the Director of DPW and Kleinfelder. Um, at which point we were informed that the cost for mitigating PFAS at wells one and two would be in the range of three and a half million dollars. Um, and that other wells would be of similar cost. There was discussion about trying to have a more centralized mitigation facility, but the wells are separated significantly. So the cost to bring their fil- the filtration system to a central spot is probably not economical regardless of the fact it's still very expensive to co-locate it. Um, I think in part, this is what has triggered the letter from the select board, but I think for the community as a whole, they need to understand that we're very much aware of it. We're very concerned about the levels at some of the wells and DPW is definitely monitoring them very closely and ensuring the health and integrity of the drinking water that's being provided to all town citizens. Uh, the other piece, which was the sewers, there's a long discussion regarding rewriting the proposed bylaw change. There was a great deal of discussion regarding whether or not to in some way force users who have the right to hook up, who have chosen not to do so, to do so. Um, the preference is not to have any form of coercion in this and to help them understand that there is a cost to all existing users if they don't hook up. So they're basically passing on cost to those who have hooked up by not hooking up themselves. And they're also putting the town in the position of not uh potentially not having adequate sewer capacity in the town with the CWRA as a result of uh the way in which individuals who are not hooked up are assessed to the town's total quota against those who have. And it turns out to be somewhere between twenty-five and seventy and maybe fifty percent of what the actuals are. Um, is they charge essentially double that, which is causing us to run out of capacity for growth right now. So these are major issues. There will be another meeting coming up in a couple of days. Uh, the object is to try to get the bylaw rewritten in such a way that we can have it discussed with the community and go into the warrant as an article to be voted on at this May town meeting. The second meeting, which I really couldn't attend more than about twenty, twenty-five minutes because I also had a select board meeting that night, was the energy committee. Um, they've done a great job of evaluating, trying to give you potential users the cost structure of using various kinds of green energy throughout the town. Uh, but they're also looking at better ways of uh ensuring energy efficiency in the buildings throughout the town and getting the town higher ratings, which of course affects our insurance and our compliance. So there are a lot of issues going on. The committee is very aggressive in these matters, very knowledgeable, and like all of our committees, we can be very pleased that we have people like this serving on our committees. I say that in part as a plug to try to get as many people who might be interested to serve on these committees as possible. Um, a number of committees are shorthanded. So all I can ask is please, if you have any interest, get in touch and let's see if we can get you to join up and help the town in these areas. Otherwise, thank you very much.
Uh, thank you. Just uh to follow up on the um the new review of the enterprise committee's review of the sewer bylaw, um, is there still an intent or uh objective of having that as uh part one of the warrant articles for the Springtown meeting? Is that still your intent?
As I understand it, that is the intent. There's just a great deal of discussion on the wording, and that's what's going on right now.
Well, it's certainly a huge issue. And what I would like to do is, to the extent that the committee has something to present uh or prepared, I'd like to uh, you know, get them on the agenda for the select board, not necessarily for decision, but at least for conversation. And I certainly would like to leave ample time for that. So we could, you can let us know. I'd like to schedule, you know, a good chunk of time um so that we don't uh so that we give the enterprise committee the opportunity to lay out its thinking as well as giving the community some time to think about it. I'm not suggesting this is the only way, the only time we would have that, but I do think it's, as we all know, a very important issue. And I want to just plan our agenda so that we can accommodate, you know, a good, a good piece of time for the for the conversation.
I appreciate that. And I can tell you, the committee and especially the chairperson, Kathy McGinnis, would very much like to have the time to go over that and review it with the board. So I will bring that up on Thursday. I think it's this Thursday that we have our next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Miss Underhill?
Uh, yes, I have a few. Um, the Senate Committee meetings since the last time I've reported back to you, um, uh, they've been consistent with their discussion about um COVID numbers. There, they did discuss last time um that they've, that technically the school has been open all year, open meaning, um, you know, the the school is in session and that there are um some people in the building, you know, to a point. Um, we all, they're also discussing getting the K through second grade back in a more uh full-time capacity, which in this case means four days a week. Uh, so they'd be looking at um getting groups of students to go back Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday. Um, they've already begun the process with high need students and they'll be looking to um either start with, you know, start with kindergarten, first or second to get um those groupings back into the building as much as possible. Um, we did not provide updates last meeting, correct? Correct, okay. So I also attended the economic development um committee meeting. Uh, they also discussed the Lansing Memorial Building. Um, there was a discussion about an anti-litter campaign perhaps. Um, you know, just based on, I'm sure everyone's seen NIPS and all sorts of things tossed on the side of the road. So um there was a discussion about that as well, um, as well as complete streets and the urban land institute technical assistance program. Um, there's an application that would be submitted for that. Um, it centers around a town center study project. The community preservation committee, um, there were two items discussed there, which was uh the phase two of the project for the Henry F. Walling map, which is um projected to be at discussed at town meeting, as well as um a s- a senior project to build a dugout at the high school. Um, and they were looking for funding um from the community preservation committee uh for that. So um, that is pretty much what I have.
Oh, thank you. Um, I would ask, as you're our former liaison, if you could, prior to um our meeting on the sixty-one A property, if you could just reach out to the Chair of the CPC, um, and I'm sure he knows about it, but let's just make sure that they're aware of it. Because we, you know, should be considering conversations around any possibility of using open space money in the seat in the community preservation fund as part of the potential funding um source for purchase of the the Warren property. I'm not asking the CPC to commit to it. I just want to make sure we have an actual outreach from our board to uh that committee. Um, hopefully, um, yeah, not asking them to commit, but at least to be aware of it and hopefully inviting them a little bit more formally to attend the meeting on March first so that they could provide whatever input they might want to provide. So that I think that'd be a good idea.
Sure, I can do that.
Okay, thank you. All right. Um, the next item on the agenda, hopefully is informational. This is an item I put on for the capital needs prioritization process. I mentioned this before, but I wanted to make sure that the board had, was aware of the the actual methodology that the capital planning committee was using in taking the recommended capital projects and trying to prioritize them uh for their report back to the town uh to the town and then for consideration of the town meeting. Uh, if you take a look at this, um, this is, I I wanted in particular to look at the criteria that the the capital planning committee has used the last couple of years and is going to use this year. Now, they may or may not make some tweaks to it, but at this point, this is what they're doing. And I thought that they were certainly um something that we should be aware of as we think through projects that we might want to um propose um for consideration under the capital plan. And even to the point where um at some point, whether it's this year or in future years, we start to have our department heads start to address these criteria when they prepare their capital needs requests. Um, I think connecting the originating department with what the actual recommending group is going to look at is probably helpful. Um, and it may help us to also, um, I don't, you know, at some point, we are trying to accomplish a comprehensive list of all capital projects. I think it's important for us to uh also put a I think it's important for us to also put upon department heads their need and to continue to emphasize their need to help us prioritize these needs. And then knowing full well that the final review from the Capital Planning Committee is still going to use their methodology, but I don't know exactly how the rest of the members feel, and I'm not trying to upset the apple cart for requests that have already been made. But I do think it's important for us and for department heads to understand what criteria are being used and how much weight is being assigned to each of these criteria. So I opened that for just conversation among the board members.
Chairman McCaffrey?
Yes, Ms. Underhill?
I think that's a great idea. I think if, I think if everybody took into account what's on this worksheet, it would, I mean, even from their own requests that would get to us, it would probably help them prioritize first and then help us once we're able to see, you know, where it gets to us. I know some of this might, you know, be subject to opinion, but it would be a, a good starting point to have something a little bit more thought out and specific than just, you know, here's our list.
Mr. Chairman? I apologize. Excuse me. My, my fault. I not only like it, I was just wondering if we should have, I see a category called "value to citizens." I would like to consider an option that is value to the entire town rather than to any specific group, department, or whatever. I say that, and it doesn't take much imagination to understand where I'm headed, whether it's trees or roads or something like that. Those deal with issues that are not for any one department or any one building or any one group in town, but they are for the town as a whole. And I think there are certain projects that perhaps fit into a category where they need a special weighting that says, hey, this project is of great value to the entire town, whereas other projects are certainly. They all have a value to the town, but it's not across the entire town. It's for students, it's for groups of seniors, it's for whatever. And so they have a different weighting, and at least it gives certain projects a very unique weighting in that category. Anyway, a thought process, you were looking for thoughts, that's one of them.
Yeah, I think you're right. I mean, whether or not that's inherent in the criteria, and I'm not trying to reorganize the way the Capital Planning Committee is going to be analyzing these, because we appointed that committee to do, you know, across the departments, independent review. But I do think that if we're going to adopt this exactly how we would structure it in terms of the form, it's more than just a form. I, I just want, as you indicated, Ms. Underhill, I want our department heads to take some ownership of trying to develop proposals based upon these criteria. And if we wanted to broaden that one from our perspective, you know, what's the value to the community as a whole? I see no problem with that. Now, from a practical point of view, you know, departments are sort of aware of this anyway because they know that the process goes through the Capital Planning Committee. I just want to incorporate into our directions to our department heads as they present material to us that we will be looking at the same criteria as well. And, you know, I think that, I think that's just a step forward, it's more coordinated. And I agree that, you know, maybe we need to broaden a couple of the categories here from our point of view to make sure that we're thinking about this in the right way. Mr. Gudzinski, in terms of incorporating this kind of, these kind of evaluations, these criteria into the priority rankings, from a practical point of view, you know, where do we stand in terms of this year's requests? Is it, is it reasonable to ask our department heads to think about these things and get back to us? Not necessarily each item, but certainly, you know, if it's a regulatory mandate, we shouldn't have to guess that. We, we need to, we need to say, somebody needs to tell us that that's a mandate. And if somebody's going to be doing something that's going to generate revenue as opposed to strictly cost money, I think it's helpful for us that the department heads could maybe respond to that a little bit. I'm not trying to create additional work, because we are fairly, you know, we're fairly far down the road here. From a practical perspective, what value can we get in the short term by sort of sharing this with department heads and asking them to address it directly as it relates to their capital requests?
Mr. Chairman, we could certainly do that. You know, I'd probably recommend focusing just on the items that are, that they're seeking for funding at the Spring Town Meeting, you know, or at the Fall Town Meeting, to limit it to those, but we could certainly reach out to them and ask them to try to dovetail some answers, you know, that connect to the priority ranking criteria that's listed on the sheet. We haven't really approached it from that angle precisely, although some of the questions on their forms do, do relate to many of these items, but not, not probably directly some of them.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. I mean, even if we just take the first three on the top of the list, there was some broad categories about legal compliance regulations, alignment with the strategy, you know, that the department has. An example is if the department has a strategy for, in the case of the police, replacing their vehicles annually, then clearly the request to do that is in line with the strategy that they've been following throughout. All right. I, I, I think what I'd like to do is ask you to think about this, maybe share it with the department heads, let them know the thinking of the board, that perhaps they ought to address some of these issues directly. I do agree, I don't, I'm not, they've already, if they don't request it for the current Town Meeting or the Fall Town Meeting, then it's clearly not going to fall into any of these categories anyway because its priority is already determined. But to the extent that they're looking at two or three or four items, if they could just give us some thoughts or commentary or anything that would address these issues, because I think the Capital Planning Committee is going to use them. I think you've heard some indications from the board, the categories are pretty solid and things we ought to be asking as well. So maybe we could do a little, almost dry run this year to ask them, with respect to their capital requests, if they could address some of these issues, particularly if you just look at the top three, the categories, the large categories, rather than ticking off all the boxes here. They could, if they wanted.
We could certainly send something out to them, to the department heads that have pending requests for the upcoming Town Meeting and ask them to answer those three questions on all those capital projects of, that are for immediate request.
The other option is we'll ask you to tell us.
I could certainly interpret, my interpretation of it.
All right, well, I think it's the sense of the board that we'd like to see the capital projects at least address these things. And they're going to have to address them one way or the other because the Capital Planning Committee is going to, you know, going to look at this anyway. I'm not trying to duplicate effort, but I do think if we could make it consistent, then we'd have a better outcome for everybody.
Right, we could certainly discuss with the special Capital Planning Committee, maybe putting this on to, you know, or adding this to the, to the request forms going forward so that, you know, it's kind of captured, you know, at that phase for, for all projects going forward. But for this year, we can certainly request funding this coming year.
Okay, let's do that. All right, the next item we have is the discussion of the 61A property, the hearing. We have a, we have a, what I wanted to do here, of course, is talk a little bit about what we might present at the beginning of that hearing as we ask for community input on the potential project. So, Mr. Gudzinski, you provided us with a memo, maybe you could go through it quickly.
So the board, the board has scheduled a public hearing for March 1st at 7:00 PM regarding the possible purchase of the Braun property, which is, as the board is aware, but for the public, is a property held under general law chapter 61A status, which provides that in order for the owner to sell the property, they must first approach the town, and the town has, has an option, if exercised, to purchase the property at the, at the price that's been agreed upon in the purchase and sales with another party. And so at that hearing on the first, the focus of that will be to discuss, you know, the pros and cons of the purchase of the property, the thoughts on the use of the property, and importantly, discuss funding sources for the purchase of the property, and allow the public to voice its comments, concerns, and to ask questions in regards to the property or the future use of that property. So that's, that's really it in a nutshell, and it's really, the intent of this is to really flesh out the different thoughts of the public as well as hear different ideas about the, you know, pros and cons and the potential uses of the property. I think you're muted, Mr. Chairman.
Just trying to minimize feedback. What I'd like to do is, at least at the outset of the meeting, have the ability to display a map to the best of our ability of the, of the property, which includes not only where it's located, but what it provides, because I think it's important for people to understand exactly where it is, exactly what's for sale, how it relates to other open spaces the town owns, and how it relates to other abutting properties. So to the extent we can do that, I think that would be very helpful.
We can certainly work with our assessing department and get some accurate maps and that display the area and the properties it's adjacent to and how that could impact the usage of the property.
So I think that's important. I think that clearly we need to make it clear what the price is, make it clear to folks that the, what the price is is frankly what the purchase and sale agreement calls for. And I think that the, to the extent it's permitted, you know, what is, what restrictions do we, might we have in terms of any other information that we'd like to share? So, and also I, I do, if we could, you know, we involve other committees in this conversation. Planning Board, Conservation Commission, the Recreation Committee have all taken a position on this. To the extent that one or more of those members would be willing to attend the meeting and state their position, I think that would be helpful. Clearly, the board has expressed an interest in getting community input because the board has an interest in determining whether or not the purchase of this property is in the best interests of the community. I also, I think we had talked about the fact that we would like to have the Town Council attend the meeting because of the legal questions that come up that people would like to ask. I'd rather have the ability for the Town Council to respond to those.
Yep, I'll confirm that with Jay, his availability for the meeting.
Okay. So other board members, anything else you'd like to add in terms of the structure of Things we should be disclosing?
I think this covers it. The object is to have an open discussion, and that's what we want.
I agree. We're not leading this in any direction. We're just trying to set out the facts and what our options are. But we want to make it clear to folks that we're very, that the potential outcome, you know, is a warrant article at this May Town Meeting. So I guess we have our marching orders then. Very good. Thank you. And the two other items, which hopefully are fairly straightforward before we go into an executive session. First item is water sewer commitment. This is Mr. Gudzinski.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we just asked that the board vote to approve the water and sewer commitment to the collector for the month of January 2021 in the amount of $3,246.78.
I move that we approve the water sewer commitment to the collector for January 2021 in the amount of $3,246.78.
Second.
The move in second is for the board to approve the water sewer commitment for January 2021 in the amount of $3,246.78. I'll poll the board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Motion is carried unanimously. We have a minute for our meeting of February 8.
Mr. Chair, I don't know if you saw the email, but I did, and I realized I had completely forgotten a motion somehow, so I added the motion in when I had just sent it. It was for the change order for Kleinfeld to approve in $18,000 with the 53, with a total of $53,500.
I did see that.
Yeah, okay.
It were a motion to approve the minutes as the latest draft that you circulated with that.
Correct. Thank you.
So moved?
Oh, so moved? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Move and seconded to approve the meeting minutes of February 8 as amended. I'll poll the board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Motion is carried unanimously. All right, the next item we have will be an executive session. I'm going to announce the executive session will be to continue the conversation of the purchase exchange release of the value of real estate at 61A Village Street, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with union and non-union personnel, including the SEIU contract and the finance director's contract. I'm going to ask the board to go into executive session, and when we are complete with that session, we will emerge and then adjourn our open meeting. I'll poll the board to go into executive session. Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Motion is carried unanimously. We'll go into executive session. Dare I ask, is it resumed for that?
Yes.
There is.
There is.
It was on the draft minutes and the SE and the other information was sent out.
You want me to forward it to you again?
Only if you'd like me to attend.
Okay, hold on.
So we don't see it, I'll know. Thank you.
All right, we'll see you on the other side.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
See you shortly. Bye-bye.